Seeing we have a quorum, I'd like to call. It's not on. Thank you. Seeing that we have a quorum, I'd like to call to order this committee meeting of the Bloomington Common Council for September 4th, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ruff, or, well, Chopra? Thank you. Pete Mon Smith?
Here.
Granger?
Present.
Rala?
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Sterbaum?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give the agenda summation, and if you would like an agenda, you can find them beside the clerk on her desk. You're welcome to have one. We have no approval of minutes. We have no minutes to approve. We'll go to reports from council members, then we'll have reports from the mayor and city offices, council committee reports, and then we allot 20 minutes for the public to speak on items not on our agenda. Then we will go to appointments to boards and commissions before our legislation for second reading and resolutions. We have one item this evening, and that is ordinance 1912. That is to amend the City of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning 3.85 acres of property from commercial arterial, CA, to planned unit development, and approve a district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding 1800 North Walnut Street CDG acquisitions LLC petitioner. And that received a land use committee recommendation on the 28th of August 2019, due pass 013. It had a, it was referred to the Land Use Committee by regular session on the 31st of July 2019 with a adoption of a motion 700. Then we'll go to legislation for first reading. We have four items. Ordinance 1915, an ordinance authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding sewage works, revenue bonds of the city, authorizing the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana sewage works, refunding revenue bonds of 2019 to provide funds for such refunding and the payment of the cost thereof, and addressing other matters connected therewith. Second item for first reading is ordinance 1916, to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater rate adjustment. Item three for first reading is ordinance 1917, to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code BMC entitled wastewater regarding amending BMC 10.08.040. Connection fees to allow waiver of those fees in two limited circumstances: to promote conversion of septic to sewer and to complement certain city affordable housing programs. And then our last item, item four for first reading is ordinance 1918, to authorize the issuance of bonds by the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission pursuant to Indiana Code 367143.5. Then we allow additional public comment for items not on our agenda, maximum of 25 minutes at the end of our meeting before we go to council schedule and then adjournment. So, we have no minutes to approve. We will go to reports from council members, and I'll begin on my right. Councilmember Ruff, do you have a report?
No report tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Chopra?
Yes, I have some brief remarks this evening, given the attendance of the police union this evening. I first want to say that I'm glad to see so many members here. I'm going to say this because most people probably don't know this, but I'm a deputy prosecutor, not in this county, but in Lawrence County, and part of my job is to read police reports. And if you do that as part of your job, you see how important law enforcement officers are for our community, and I'm going to take this opportunity just to thank you for all of your service and the things that you do, both big and small, to serve our community and to protect us. Some small things that people don't realize that you do every day are things like travel at high rate of speed in your vehicle to respond to other people's emergencies, which every time you do that is a danger to you. You sweep glass off of the roadway after an accident. That's not something people think of that you do all the time. I've seen a police report where there was a child who was being neglected, and an officer changed the kid's very soiled diaper. And so those are some of the small things that officers do every day to serve our community. But what really stands out is what you do to protect our safety. And I guess I'll just, I'll give a small example. I'm preparing today for a suppression hearing tomorrow in an incident where officers were called to a scene of a suicidal member of the community, and they had thought that the person was deceased, however she wasn't, and it turned into a dangerous situations where they were faced with having to shoot an individual for their own personal safety. Everyone, including the victim slash defendant, was thankful to the police for their response and for the way that they handled the situation and worked to de-escalate it. So, that was a very difficult situation, and people on our police force do these things every day, and sometimes it's in the newspaper and sometimes it's not. So, I just want to say thank you for all of your service. Thank you for putting your lives and your family's lives on the line every day for the people of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Mon Smith?
No report.
Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. This week was Garlic Fest, Fourth Street Art Affair, Arts Fair, and Pride Fest, and I just want to thank people who were able to make it out and support these groups and support our community and the arts in the community, and I'm just really kind of happy that Bloomington has these kinds of events to offer and that we all participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg, do you have a report? Councilmember Sterbaum?
Yeah, just second. Councilmember Chopra's gratitude to the police force. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I guess I'll third what Councilmember Chopra said in support of law enforcement, but my comments tonight have to do, and I think many of you know, that there was a anti-hate or peace rally on last week, and many of us were present, some of us were able to speak there. But that's really not what I really want to talk about. After that, the rabbi at the local synagogue was accosted by someone, and I guess face-to-face, verbally, not physically, basically to tell this person that she was not in fact Jewish. I wish someone would explain to me how you can be a rabbi of a synagogue without being of the Jewish faith. And two of my other colleagues on their way to another meeting after that, that we were all involved with, were, as reported to me, called unspeakable names that I won't repeat here, and basically accused of some other lewd acts. Again, you can just use your imagination. I don't think I probably ought to get into that. The whole point of this, that it is behavior like that and activity like that, that if there's ever a need for us as a community to sit down and listen to each other and work some things out and try to get past this hate, this ill will, then those are examples that highlight the point I'm trying to make this evening. So, welcome everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Volin?
Just glad to see everybody here, and just an observance of my late father, who would have been 90 tomorrow. I'm just thinking of him now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a, so we will go now to the mayor and city offices. Are there any reports from the mayor? Okay, seeing none, we will go to council committee reports. Do we have a report from the mayor and city offices? Okay. Sorry. Move too quickly.
Good evening. Thank you, council members. My name is Kelsey Thetonia. I work for the Utilities Department. I'm the MS4 Coordinator for the city. MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, and my job is to implement the city's stormwater quality management plan through various pollution prevention strategies, among other things. I want to update you tonight on the status of our residential stormwater grants program, which we implemented for the first time this year in 2019. So, I wanted to say thank you for budgeting the $35,000 that we were able to use in our community. So, these funds are helping to pay for stormwater improvement projects on private property, which is not what the City of Bloomington Utilities can typically do. So, it's allowed us to reach a wider audience. So, in March, we held a public meeting at the Utility Service Center. We had over 60 people in our boardroom, and later that month, I ended up visiting 30 homeowners at their homes to talk about the grants program, address their, any erosion and any drainage issues that they may have, and talk about potential grant projects that we could implement. We ended up receiving 26 applications. They totaled over $167,000, and we had representation from over 15 neighborhoods. We set up a five-member review committee. We had a member of the Utility Service Board, some are from the Utilities Engineering Department, someone from the Environmental Commission, and then two members of the public. So, they reviewed the projects and came up with a decision to fund 11 of the 26 projects. So, we had $35,000 to spend, and we ended up funding four rain gardens, four driveway culvert replacement projects, two Dry Creek Bed Drainage Projects, and then one ditch stabilization project. So, the projects are currently being implemented. They have one full year from the date when the grant agreements were signed, so most of them should be wrapping up by next summer. And I'm excited to share the progress with you, and thank you again for allocating these funds. So, for next year, we thank you for continuing this program, and we're going to be focusing our reach on some of our understaffed neighborhoods to really reach out to the whole community and because managing the stormwater, as I've found out through my position, it's really a community effort. So, thank you for making this program possible. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you for that presentation. Other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are there any other reports from mayor and city offices? We will now go to council committee reports. I think we'll reserve our council committee reports for the petition from the Land Use Committee, so we will now go to the public. If you would like to speak on items not on our agenda this evening, could I have a show of hands so we have an idea of how many might? How many do? Just as four? Four? Okay. You have five minutes each, and please state your name, and I believe there's a sign-in sheet that would assist the clerk in preparing minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Paul Post, President of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 88, representing the members of the Collective Bargaining Unit at the Bloomington Police Department. I'm joined tonight by many of those members and their families. If you recall, I spoke to you in May of this year after the city bargaining team declared our contract negotiation at an impasse, and we voted, or we moved to mediation. That process is now concluded, and it produced another written proposal from the city. Unfortunately, that proposal was not enough, and it was voted down by the membership because it did not adequately meet the financial needs, nor was it designed to meet the recruiting and retention needs so many of you have recently pointed out. You asked Chief DeKoff for some specific facts about staffing levels and overtime costs going forward into the budget discussion. We plan to give you some of those answers tonight. Please keep asking those questions. We appreciate Ms. Sandberg's comments about officer wellness and how the extra work may be affecting the officers, and I can tell you, it has. They are tired and fed up. It is a weekly occurrence for supervisors to send out emails asking for volunteers just to cover the minimum number of officers to staff a patrol shift. One of the last emails was from a second shift sergeant, which said, quote, "Second shift will be in need of help almost every day in September. Some days, we are in need of at least two officers." That's just to cover the basic patrol shift, not extra special events. From the beginning of this contract negotiation, our FOP team has told the city that the situation we find BPD in is largely caused by recruiting and retention failures. We continue to lose officers to agencies that pay market competitive wages. Chief DeKoff was correct in his statement to you, recruiting and retaining officers is difficult in this current environment. It's even harder when you hamstring yourself through low wage offers, all while demanding more from an already overworked personnel. That's why a simple thing like increasing the salary and benefits package can help. The pool of applicants has dwindled, and those who are applying to BPD now have more attractive options to look at. Current BPD officers do the same thing. They look at other agencies with appropriate staffing levels and competitive salaries, and then they leave Bloomington. If you're going to do a hard job, why not go where you can make a decent living at it? Which brings us to you. Everyone knows the money is there. Everyone recognizes the need to hire more officers and to keep the officers we have. We need you to tell the mayor and the city negotiating team to work with us on a market competitive salary and benefits package. The time to fix the overtime and staffing shortage is now. I'll leave you with this thought before my colleagues speak. On the recent holiday weekend celebrating workers in the American Labor Movement, your police officers had their time off canceled or had to work extended hours on their regular days off. Not much of a celebration was had. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Trey Aluck. I'm the BPD day shift representative. When we started this negotiation 18 months ago, we looked for ways to quantify what we recognized around the state. The BPD was no longer getting large groups of applicants, and we were rapidly losing tenured officers to other agencies. We utilized a Certified Indiana Public Retirement System salary list, which is compiled each year and from which our officers' retirement salary is based. It is a list of police and fire departments in Indiana who pay into the 1977 Police and Fire Pension Fund. Bloomington is recognized as the seventh largest city by population in Indiana, yet in 2018, BPD was 54th in pay on this list, 54th. We told the city negotiating team repeatedly that Bloomington was going to have to make changes to become market competitive, and sadly, the response have been status quo. We told them what would happen if we crossed into 2019. The other cities would continue their efforts to improve police recruiting and retention through increasing salary and benefits, and Bloomington would fall further behind in the hole. Which brings us to 2019. On the city certified list, I'm sorry, on the certified list this year, BPD dropped to even further, now 66th in the state. As you've pointed out, we continue to grow as a city, adding population each year. More important to patrol officers, though, is the daily population numbers. A census number is great on paper, but the reality is Bloomington has thousands of people come to town each and every day for work, school, sporting events, et cetera. Those people still require police services despite not being officially represented on the census. So, your already understaffed police department has to work much more harder, I'm sorry, than is represented in those numbers. We also looked with hope at the city and efforts through commissioning those salary studies. We knew exactly what they would show, that BPD is underpaid compared to our peers. The MAG study of union-specific positions compared to BPD with 19 other agencies showed us in the bottom quarter of that group hardly market competitive to comparatively sized cities. One would expect that the city would look at their own study and recognize they needed to make some financial changes in their salary, offers to keep a few police officers we do have, and an attempt to gain new ones in a shrinking market. Unfortunately, that has not happened, and that is why officers rejected the last proposal. They know they're worth more, and if they want, they can go somewhere else that will be more compensated, that will compensate them fairly. The cycle of being short-staffed continues, leading to rising overtime and burnout cops. An example, let's look at this last few weekends in August. Department had to declare to the Board of Public Safety and the union that they did not have enough cops to cover the plan to secure the farmer's market issue, and the numerous Labor Day weekend festivities. So, for three weekends, time off was canceled. Officers worked on the regular days off, and officers had been working extended shift hours. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff Rogers. I'm a 13-year veteran of the Bloomington Police Department. Tonight, I'm going to provide you with some facts and figures to support what these other officers have already told you, that include problems with recruiting and retention, ratio of officers to residents, overtime expenditures, and the salary study comparisons. All council members will receive an email with these detailed facts after this meeting is complete. The salary study that was commissioned in 2018 by the city specifically for unions was the MAG study. They compared 19 other Indiana cities to Bloomington. So, the numbers and comparisons that I'm going to give you tonight is based upon those other 19 cities that the salary study came up with, not our choosing. When we talk about recruiting, the best way to measure this is by how many people show up to a hiring process, not by how many people fill out an online application, but by how many people actually show up. Whenever we talk about 2019 hiring processes, Bloomington PD had 35 people show up to their hiring process. For other cities with lower and higher populations, Mooresville, they had 58 show up, Columbus, 85 showed up, Jeffersonville, 80, Lawrence, 143, Greenwood, 150, Fishers, 60, Carmel, 87, Evansville, 109. We're not the smallest department on that list by any means. Everybody's numbers are down as far as recruiting, but they are worse in Bloomington than they are anywhere else on this list. Regarding retention, got two different four-year comparisons for you. If we look at January 1st, 2012, to December 31st, 2015, during that four-year period, we had 22 officers leave for one reason or another, whether it be retirement, whether it be going to another department, another job completely. January 1st, 2016, until the present, three years and eight months, we've had 44 officers leave, double the amount. We talk about officer ratio, and they measure that by one officer per thousand. I know that there are several people up here that have spoken about it before, so you guys, I know you're aware of it. Of those 20 cities provided by the MAG study, including Bloomington, the average was 1.69 officers per thousand. BPD's average is 1.19 when we're at full staffing of 103, and we haven't been at full staffing anytime recently. BPD would need 146 officers to be at the 1.69 officers per thousand residents. So, anytime annexation is even mentioned, we take it pretty serious and we get pretty nervous because we're already overworked. Overtime expenditures. I know it was asked about these numbers. I don't know if you've been provided these numbers yet or not, so this may be information that you already have. 2017, 18, and 19, the overtime budgets for each year were $327,000 roughly. The 2018 actual numbers were $695,000 in overtime. As of 2019, as of the last, the end of the last pay period, we are now at $571,000 this year. At the same point in 2018, we were at $481,000. We're already $90,000 over where we were last year. If it stays constant at this pace compared to last year, we'll be at over $785,000 for the year in overtime. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jacob Woods. I am the night shift representative for the bargaining unit with the Bloomington Police Department. I'm going to pick up where Jeff left off, speaking about the salary comparisons specifically with the MAG study, in that the MAG study picked out those 19 cities. Bloomington ranked 16th out of that entire list.
Bring the microphone a little closer to you. I'm sorry.
Bloomington was ranked 16th in that entire list, even though we're the seventh largest city in the state by population. The MAG study stated that Lafayette, Indiana, was the closest in both population demographics and the fact that they have a Big Ten university. However, Lafayette has 10,000, a population of 10,000 smaller than Bloomington by census, and their officer ratio is two officers per 1,000 residents. Also, their police department is paid, on average, $11,000 more on their base salary than the Bloomington Police Department is. Columbus Police Department was another city listed based on its close proximity to Bloomington. However, their population is half the size of ours currently. Their officer ratio is 1.77 officers per thousand residents, and the Columbus salary starts at $3,000 more than the Bloomington Police Department's salary does. And once you make it to the 20-year mark, which is kind of the benchmark for the certified perf salary, you're making $8,000 more than a comparable Bloomington police officer would be making. In 2019, the Columbus Police Department issued a 13% raise to their entire police force, along with expanding their take-home vehicle program to allow officers to live outside of the county and also have a take-home vehicle, which in reference to, in comparison to Bloomington, we do not have a take-home program for standard patrol officers. However, sergeants, lieutenants, and administrative staff do have take-home vehicles, however, they're not allowed to live outside of the county with those vehicles. Bloomington is currently the only Class II city in the state that does not have a take-home vehicle program. The only Class I city, of course, is Indianapolis, and they have take-home vehicles for their entire police department. In conclusion to all the other presentations, we just want to say that our officers are underpaid compared to cities around the state that are larger and smaller than us. Our officers work harder and take on more responsibilities, we feel, than other departments around the state as well. Our recruiting and retention has become more of an issue over the years, and at this point, we see it as a crisis. It's not getting better in the short term, and we only see it getting worse in the long term. We've already lost 10 officers this year. That's, our average over the last several years has been about 10. We lost our 10th officer in July of this year, and based on the way our contract negotiations have gone, we're concerned we're going to be losing more before the end of the year. To put that into perspective, we only have a fully-staffed, budgeted police department of 103 officers, and losing 10 a year, it's a 10% turnover rate. Our officers are not something you can just hire somebody and plug and play, get them right on the road. They take, if they have to go to the academy, that's a four-month academy process, and then also a three-to-four-month FTO process when they get out. Reasonably, a new hire will take eight to 10 months to be capable of taking calls on their own and provide our manpower. Currently, we are aware of at least 10 to 12 BPD officers that are in processes with other agencies currently. We don't have hard numbers on that because of the way, you know, hiring works. You don't necessarily want to show your cards and let everyone know you're trying to leave and go somewhere else. Right now, for an officer at my age, I've been on to the department for three years, there's not a lot of incentive for someone at my level to stay here. There's better salary, there's better equipment, there's better job satisfaction at other places. However, I chose to come here. I want to work in this city, and I want to have a future here. And we also want to make sure everyone knows, this is not a negative reflection on the chief or the administration. We know what they have, they have to work within the rules and boundaries they're given, and the budget, the number of new hires, all of those things are the bounds with, excuse me, in which they have to work. Currently, the way those numbers look, Bloomington does not have a competitive salary. We don't have competitive benefits. We don't have competitive benefits for officers. We're constantly asked to do more with less. We're getting to the point where less is so little, we can't do any more with it. If we continue to not be competitive, the number of quality applicants is going to only drop more, and we'll be hiring less and less of the most qualified individuals. When you're hiring eight spots and you have thirty-five applicants, do you really think you're getting the cream of the crop of applicants when you have that many vacancies to fill and that few options to choose from? I know that there are members on this council who won't be in these positions next year, but you'll still be residents of Bloomington, and this will still continue to affect you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Okay, before we move on, let me just say that I'm very sorry that we find ourselves at-
At a point in an impasse, and we really appreciate you coming this evening and sharing your comments, and we appreciate any data that you can share, and so that we might help at resolution. So we hope to be in contact with you in the near future, and so that we can resolve and move forward. So thank you all for coming this evening. Appreciate it. Okay, we will now move to appointments, the board's commissions. Do we have any appointments? Seeing no appointments. Let's, let's just wait a moment for the chambers to clear, and then we'll-
Go ahead and do the second reading.
All right, go ahead.
Just to be able to start it.
Okay, we'll move now to ordinance nineteen twelve.
We have to, you have to reintroduce it, we have to go to legislation for second reading.
We have legislation for second reading, we'll move on to that.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance nineteen twelve be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that ordinance nineteen twelve be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance nineteen twelve, to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning three-point-eight-five acres of property from commercial arterial to planned unit development and to approve a district ordinance and preliminary plan regarding eighteen-hundred North Walnut Street, CDG Acquisitions LLC petitioner. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance nineteen twelve would rezone three-point-eight-five acres from commercial arterial to planned unit development and approve the associated district ordinance and preliminary plan to allow the construction of a mixed-use development. Your land use committee recommendation from August twenty-eighth was due pass zero-one-three.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance nineteen twelve be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. Let's proceed in this manner. We'll have the petition introduced by staff, by Mr. Berlich, and then we will have a synopsis of the land use committee before we go to the petitioner. And I may refer to our council attorney at some point, in terms of reference, in terms of our timetable and so forth, for resolving this. So let's proceed first with Mr. Berlich. Would you like to describe this for us?
Thank you. This is a request from CDG Acquisitions to rezone a three-point-eight-five-acre piece of property that is on the north side of town to a planned unit development. The property is currently zoned commercial arterial and has been developed with a motel building. Surrounding land uses include various commercial buildings to the north, apartments to the north, and the east and south. To the west, you've got Miller Showers Park, and then on the west side of Walnut Street, you have more high-density family housing over on that side. So the site is currently developed with a Motel Six property, various buildings for the one-story motels. The petitioner is requesting to rezone it to a planned unit development in order to allow for the site to be redeveloped. They're also requesting a waiver from the required five-acre minimum for a planned unit development. The petitioner is requesting a planned unit development because the petitioner's proposal does not work within any of the existing zoning districts that we have within our zoning code. So that is, that is one of the main reasons for a PUD, is that what is being proposed cannot be accomplished within a current zoning district. So they are requesting to rezone the property to a PUD to allow for it to be redeveloped with a five-to-six-story multifamily project. There would be a mixed-use space along the front. This would be utilized for mostly student-oriented housing. As I mentioned, this is a PUD, so the standards that are being proposed tonight are unique to the site. They have based the proposed standards on a mix of zoning districts. Architectural standards have been based on the commercial downtown. The setback standards are being proposed based on the current zoning, as well as some of the future guidance that we are looking to move forward for the student housing district. So the standards that they are requesting are kind of a mix of different standards. They are unique to this property, and therefore should, should be looked at as unique to the site and not necessarily a comparison to other districts, but does this fit in with this site? So one of the things that staff and the planning commission looked at with this proposal is not necessarily density, but how does the massing and the size and the scale and the scope of this building fit on the site? So that, we feel like, is, is one of the more key characteristics to evaluating a project and architecture, is not how many people are in the building, but what is the shape of the building? How does it fit in with the surroundings? Is, is it appropriate for this area? So with that, I'll just kind of talk about the surrounding area for a little bit. So the area that we're looking at here is outlined in red, it's kind of on the north side of the screen here. So you can see by the aerial, there are a substantial amount of high-density multifamily projects that are to the northeast and south of this. To the south of this, a little bit further to the south of Nineteenth Street, you've got a mix of one- and two-story homes. To the southeast of this, over in the corner of Dunn and Seventeenth, you have the recently approved and constructed Evolve project. So while this aerial is on the screen, I just want to take a moment to point out the unique characteristic of this particular area. So what the, what I'm looking at and what I'm referring to is the area of the city that is bounded by the bypass to the north, Seventeenth Street to the south, Dunn Street to the east, and Walnut Street to the west. As you can see by this aerial, there is a high amount, pretty much a majority of this area, has been developed with high-density student-oriented housing. This is also the prospective area that we have highlighted as a possible ideal location for more student-oriented housing, simply because it is adjacent to goods and services, it's on a bus route, it's immediately adjacent to the campus stadium where the IU buses pick up and drop off. So this is an ideal location that is not embedded in a single-family neighborhood, it is not constrained with environmental features. There's, there are a lot of benefits to this particular area that are unique to this area that you, that we've struggled to find in other portions of the city adjacent to campus that are appropriate for student-oriented housing. So the petitioner is coming forward with a proposal that works toward accomplishing one of the main goals, not main goals, but one of the, the goals that certainly came out of the comprehensive plan, which was to find locations for student-oriented housing that is not in the downtown. So as I mentioned, this, this location, this area, is an ideal location for that. So overall, this petition would remove all of the buildings on the site and construct two new buildings. The buildings would range in height from five to six stories. As I mentioned, there would be a space along the front, there would be a commercial space as well as amenity space. The petitioners are proposing a mix of units within the building, a mix of micro-units, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and four-bedroom units. They are proposing a maximum density for this project. So although they have proposed a possible bedroom count now, overall, the development on the site will be capped by a maximum density. They have incorporated the dwelling unit equivalencies that are in the zoning code now that deal with how density is calculated based on the number of bedrooms within a unit. So that is being proposed with this. There would be a parking garage central to the main building that would provide parking for the site as a whole. The petitioners are proposing a parking ratio with a minimum of zero-point-five spaces per bedroom and a maximum of zero-point-seven-five. They've previously indicated that they believe that their parking is probably going to be much closer to the zero-point-five than the zero-point-seven-five, and given this location, the bus transit that's immediately adjacent to here, location to everything else, we certainly feel comfortable with the, the number of parking spaces that are being proposed. So real quick, I'll just kind of walk through the site plan. Walnut Street is on the left side of the screen here. There is a slight, or not a slight, but there is a cut-through through Miller Showers Park that allows traffic to move from College to Walnut. There is currently a misalignment between that drive and the existing drive from Motel Six. So with it, so with this project, that drive would be relocated to be in a, a direct alignment, so that would fix an existing problem that is on the site. There would be one main access point. This also serves the properties to the south of this. So the access drive has been designed to allow for access to the property to the south, as well as for this property as well. There is a drive that is shown around the two buildings, that is to provide fire department access only. There is a parking garage that is located on the south side of the main building, but the rest of the drive is, is simply there for emergency access purposes only. So as I mentioned, there are two buildings. There is one main building on the west side of the site, another building on the east side of the site. Both of the buildings have little courtyard areas that have been designed within them to provide some green space. The building has undergone a couple of changes during the course of the hearings, both from the planning commission and the land use committee. The building has been moved forward towards Walnut Street as much as possible. There's a water line and easement that runs along there that presents some difficulties with moving the building much closer to the street. So they've moved that. The commercial space is still along the northwest corner of the building, and there are several plaza areas that have been shown adjacent to there to help promote pedestrian accessibility and interaction between the street and the building. Several large plaza areas and sidewalk connections that will also be heavily landscaped as well. So one of the, one of the issues or items for discussion that has been revolving around this project are sidewalk connections, both within this project as well as off-site connections. There is, to the east of this, is the Varsity Villas complex. The petitioners are still in various negotiations and conversations with Varsity Villas to provide pedestrian access through their site. They have shown a pedestrian connection stub to the east that could potentially extend through the Varsity Villas site if they're able to successfully complete those negotiations. They would be installing a sidewalk along the front of this property to help complete that system, as well as there are some missing sidewalks further south of this site that they would be completing, and that would also extend along Nineteenth Street as well. So this would help complete the sidewalk system on Walnut Street, as well as extend it further on to Nineteenth Street. Nineteenth Street has a mix of sidewalk systems along that corridor. There are still a few more properties to the east of this that would be lacking sidewalks, but there would be a sidewalk component along the majority of Nineteenth Street. So as I mentioned, there have been a lot of changes to this petition during the course of the hearings. The petitioner has moved the building further to the west. They've eliminated a drive aisle and parking spaces that were previously shown. They have increased the building setback to the south, and I'll, I have a slide in a few seconds that I'll step through that'll kind of show those setbacks. The modulation and the architecture has been increased along the front of the building, and I believe the petitioners will speak about that a little bit as well. Since the last land use committee meeting, the petitioners have removed an entire floor off of the eastern building to help bring the height down. That also has reduced their density and bedroom count a little bit. They've also agreed to add solar panels and green roof to the building as well to help add on some environmental sustainability to the project. So real quick, I mentioned that I would talk about the setbacks. So I'm going to talk about the two buildings kind of individually. The western building has a mix of setback, setbacks along the three sides. To the north, it has a twenty-nine-foot setback to the north property line. To the east, it has a thirty-five-foot setback, and to the south, it has a thirty-five-foot setback as well. So it has setback pretty substantially from both three of those property lines. The building to the east, there is a public water line that runs through the north side of that site, again, that, that presents difficulty with achieving a greater setback to the south. However, they have incorporated as much setbacks as they can. They are proposing a twenty-five-foot setback from the north property line, and then the east property line varies from a twenty to eleven-foot setback, and then along the south property line, again, they've accomplished a setback that kind of varies from fifteen feet on the east side to about thirteen feet in the middle, to an eight-foot setback for a portion of the building on the west side of the site. So I'll just kind of go through a couple of renderings that help tell a lot of the story. The architecture for the building is a mix of brick and cementous panels. They've incorporated a lot of brick columns that are on the center of the building, as well as along the corners and along the ground front, the ground front areas. You can see the plaza area with the umbrellas that is along the front. There are several little step downs that help facilitate pedestrian access from the building to the street. This is a view looking northeast, so Walnut Street is on the left side of your screen. This would be the main entrance into the site, and as I mentioned, this does provide access to the property to the south, so it's circling around there in order to accomplish that. This is another view from the south looking north. It's important to notice that the cars and surface parking lots that you see here on the right side of the screen are actually on the adjacent property. That is not part of this petition site. But you can see the front amenity space, the commercial space on the back. A lot of the modulation has been increased throughout the various hearings to help introduce a lot of architectural modulation from the building for the street. This is another rendering, just kind of looking at the street. Again, you can see the plaza area in the front, the commercial and the not, amenity space wraps around the site. You can see some of the adjacent buildings that are the white boxes that are on the adjacent properties. This gives you a good view of kind of the diversity of height and modulation that is shown throughout the building as well. As I mentioned, it's a five-to-six-story building. This particular rendering shows the building in the back still at the previous height, but as I mentioned, a floor has been removed from that building, so it is a story shorter. So this is a rendering showing existing conditions and the proposed building that is kind of in the background. So this is looking south on College. The Hampton Inn is on the left side of the screen, that's a four-story building. Just in the foreground, in front of this building is the Great Wall Restaurant, that's a one-story building that's currently vacant. So this is a view looking north, so Walnut Street is along the left side of your screen. The La Chorada Restaurant is on the foreground here with the blue roof, so you can see in the background how this building would look in relation to existing conditions. And then this is another rendering, showing a lot more of the surrounding context of existing buildings. On the right side of the screen, you can see the Parkview Apartments. These are three-story buildings. Just to the left of that, you've got the Hamptons Town Homes. Those are two-story buildings with pitched roofs. And then on the background, I mentioned the Hampton Inn that you see that's four stories. And then, you know, running along the front is the Miller Showers Park. So the petitioner has submitted some exterior elevation, showing the mix of building materials throughout the building. As I mentioned, brick and cementous panel provide most of the finishing material, and I believe the petitioner will speak a little bit about those materials, so I won't, I won't dwell on that. So real quick, I'm going to go through a massing model showing this building. Please ignore the parking spaces that are shown along the front of the building. As I mentioned, those were removed with some previous modifications. And then the building in the back, they just recently, this week, knocked a floor off of that. So while the massing of this is pretty accurate, there's still a floor missing from the back. So with this petition, they propose, the petitioners are proposing a maximum height for the building of eighty-six feet. That eighty-six feet is strictly for an amenity space that's in the center of the building. The majority of the building, as you can see here by these building heights, fall within the sixty to seventy-foot range. So it is a five-to-six-story building with the majority of the building not being taller than seventy feet. So that's important to kind of keep in mind as I'm going to go through a little bit here at the end of the screen, or end of the presentation, some of the standards that we're looking at for possible development standards for the student housing district. So with this petition, the petitioner is also required to contract with the Bloomington Transit Service to provide a shuttle service. Bloomington Transit has been overrun with all of the private shuttles for all of these student developments all over Bloomington, and it is starting to crowd their bus stops and has become a major frustration point. So the petitioner is working with Bloomington Transit to provide a, a unique route that would serve this facility and possibly others. So that is something that the petitioners would be contracting with them separately out of their own expense. This is not anything that Bloomington Transit is funding. This is strictly on the petitioners, and so the petitioners have worked with come up the route- And so the petitioners have worked with come up with a route that would serve campus and as well as serve this petition site. So as I mentioned, I wanted to just briefly talk about some of the standards that we're looking at for the new student housing district and how this project falls in line with that. So this is a slide from the standards that are being proposed. We are proposing or looking at a building setback of 15 feet along all four sides. This is regardless of height. So as you recall from the slide that I discussed, the building setbacks along the main building, they had a setback of 30 feet or greater along that. So they were vastly exceeding that 15 feet. The building in the back, they had a setback of almost 25 feet from the north property line, and it's only along a portion of the east and the south property lines where they were getting closer than this 15 feet, and they were, you know, very close to meeting that. They were certainly infringed upon by the water line that runs along the north side of the site, so they've worked to balance things as much as possible. We're looking at an impervious surface coverage of 70%. The petitioner's proposal is below that. They're in the mid-60s. We're looking at a possible structure height of six stories not to exceed 75 feet. This project meets that, with the exception of that portion of the amenity center that's 83 feet. As I mentioned, the building height for the majority of this building is at 70 or below. So this project is in line with what we are looking to try to accomplish with the new zoning code. This is something that the comprehensive plan encouraged, and this is something that our consultant has certainly encouraged as well, that incorporates best management practices for housing and making the best use of land. You know, as I mentioned, this particular site does not have any environmental constraints. There are no sinkholes, no steep slopes, no trees to save. So this is an ideal location, especially adjacent to goods and services, along a bus route, adjacent to the IU campus, to provide student-oriented housing. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the comprehensive plan comments on many aspects of this petition, one of the main ones being locate student housing outside the downtown. So this directly accomplishes that mission. So, in conclusion, this plan, this petition, this petitioner is coming forward with, was designed around a lot of the goals that the city has within our comprehensive plan, as well as a lot of the goals that we're moving towards. They've incorporated several modifications, both through the Plan Commission process and through the City Council process, to try to address concerns that have been raised regarding pedestrian accessibility, the look and feel of the building along the street, green building incentives, sustainable building practices. The petitioners are voluntarily providing a contribution to the city's Affordable Housing Fund that will be used to provide housing monies all throughout the city. So that is certainly a very great benefit as well. They've incorporated a high amount of architectural design for the project, something that the comprehensive plan encouraged for this urban gateway. And they're working with Bloomington Transit to facilitate a bus route that would serve this property as well as others around here. So that is certainly a bonus as well. Plan Commission, at their June hearing, voted unanimously to forward this to you with a positive recommendation with five conditions. And that concludes my presentation, but I believe Mr. Crowley has a few words that he would like to add as well from staff's perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Mr. Crowley, would you like to speak now, and then we'll move on once staff report's done?
Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development of the City.
Thank you for spending the time to review this tonight, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to say a few words about why we support this project. First, I know that we all understand that there's an affordable housing shortage in Bloomington, and hopefully that's not a question in anybody's mind. The shortage is due in part to two different but related issues. First, there's a basic supply and demand issue. Our supply of housing has not kept pace with our population growth, and as basic economics tell us, the result is increased housing costs. This development brings a lot of much-needed unit volume to the city. Second, our community has a challenge attracting and stimulating non-market rate developments. Absent an intervening force, developers in our market will naturally gravitate to the most lucrative use of land, which is student housing. This means that for Bloomington, to increase its supply of workforce housing or low-income housing, we need to incentivize it. That requires that we have funding to do that. This project is contributing private sector dollars to help us incentivize much-needed workforce and low-income housing throughout the city. As you know, we've used the Housing Development Fund to stimulate a number of affordable housing units over the past several years. Importantly, we support this project because its proposed location aligns with the comprehensive plan's vision for where student housing, which this is, should be placed. This development also creates density of housing in an area that is currently underutilized. And of course, it will generate the corresponding incremental tax revenues that help us maintain Bloomington's quality of life. We're also pleased that developers are actively engaged with Bloomington Transit to facilitate a public transit route from the site to campus. Finally, we support this because the developers have adjusted the original design specifically as a result of negotiations with planning staff, through the Plan Commission process, which, as Eric noted, voted unanimously to recommend the project, and through the Land Use Committee process. They've been responsive to our community's requirements and have a project, which while not perfect, accomplishes many of the goals we have for this kind of development. So we just want you to understand why we support this, how many improvements have been made throughout the negotiations on this project, and what the benefits are that it accrues to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. Does that conclude staff report?
Yes, it does.
All right. Mr. Sherman, before we move on to the Land Use Committee, could you talk a little bit about schedule and process of this petition? We have no amendments or reasonable conditions this evening, correct?
That's correct, yes. So I think what I should start with is the consequence of your vote, if you take one tonight. And by the way, if you want to have an impact on this PUD, you will need to act before Monday, September 16th. That is the expiration of the 90 days you have to act after the certification to the city clerk. So ordinarily, if you don't have a majority in a vote of the council, it's considered defeated. That is not true in this case. Under statute, you have to have a majority for it, or you have to have a majority against it. Anything different from that is a no action. So be aware of that when you're making your votes or approaching votes. What it could mean is that if you have a vote and it's a no action, maybe you don't want to just, you don't want to close out your discussion tonight. You'll want to maybe postpone it for another week, whatever. I'm just letting you know that don't think you're done if you come to a point where you haven't, you don't have a majority either way on this. So I think that's key. I'll leave the rest up to you.
Thank you for that reminder. We will now go to the Land Use Committee report. And Mr. Volin, Councilmember Volin, do you have the synopsis of that?
Yes, so the Land Use Committee met in two sessions on August 7th and 28th, and heard presentations from PMT staff, other city staff, and petitioners, engaged in questions and answers, heard it from the public.
At the end of the second meeting, the committee passed on to the council a neutral recommendation, a vote of 0, 1, 3, 1, no, 3 passes. At the second hearing, the petitioner made significant changes to the proposal based on the discussion in the first meeting, the most important being the bringing forward of the front building to embrace Walnut Street. Mr. Crowley, can you go back to that slide that showed those parking spaces still in there so that people can see what had changed from? So the most important being the bringing forward of the front building west to embrace Walnut Street, eliminating those eight parking spaces that were originally proposed and the drive lane for the original design, and moving the commercial area to the southwest corner roughly of the building. They also increased setbacks of the rear building from surrounding buildings and properties between the first meeting and the second. Significant topics of Q and A among members of the committee included the use of the $2.46 million payment in lieu of affordable housing on site, the use of different kinds of facade materials, particularly cementitious panels, the rent and the number of bedrooms per unit, the student-centered nature of the project, and the proposed new transit line. Outstanding committee member concerns included the lack of green features such as solar panels, a green roof or composting, the use of cementitious panels on the exterior as an insufficiently long-lived solution, the lack of specificity regarding the final parking ratio, or the commitment to an amount of the permanent annual budget for a proposed new bus line, and the actual linear footage of off-site sidewalk to be built or repaired. The committee felt that it was, despite the feedback and the back and forth, that it was something that they could not vote on positively or negatively either way. So that's why it's a neutral recommendation. It's up to the full council. To clarify Mr. Sherman's remarks, effectively, for those who would like to see the project not go ahead, it would require five no votes tonight. Otherwise, it will be approved, or at the final vote, otherwise it will be approved as the Plan Commission approved it. The changes that have been made by the petitioner have all been without need for reasonable, they, not the subject of reasonable conditions, they simply changed the proposal. And so I think it's safe to assume that the proposal has changed would be what would be approved, but we may need to have one reasonable condition that simply embraces all the changes that they've made so far. Finally, as Mr. Sherman said, the last day to, for the council to take any action on this PUD is the 16th, which means that there is a possibility of one more meeting on September 11th under normal procedure. And we thought that we would wait for the full council to determine whether any reasonable conditions should be made or not. So we do have that option, and I think it really depends on the conversation tonight to see where the council will go. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Before we get to questions, are there any other remarks from Land Use Committee members? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you.
He's not on the committee. Pardon? Are you on, we're going to, remarks from the Land Use Committee members? So I'm sorry if I confused you. So we'll wait on council comments. So if there are no other remarks from the Land Use Committee, then we will go to the petitioner. If the petitioner would like to make comments or a presentation, please step up and state
Good evening. Brant Stiles, CDG Acquisitions, 7711 Bonham Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri. Councilmembers, thank you very much for the time tonight. Eric, Planning Commission, I've been very enjoyable to work with over the past six months. We developed student housing across the country, so we're putting situations similar to the situations that we're in today, where we're trying to communicate a vision and try to meet some standards and understand different needs in once. And I hope that, Eric, you've seen, that we take this very seriously. We keep our ears open, and we are very responsive. There's been a significant amount of modifications that have been made to this plan. At the end of the day, I'll be honest, the back and forth makes the projects better. And it's our job to listen and be responsive and to deliver something that's of very high quality and that leaves a lasting legacy for the community. And it's something that we're very proud of how we do it and why we do it. And Eric, thank you for helping guide us along the way. Can you jump to the next one? So we are based out of St. Louis. It's, I want to say Bloomington is in our backyard a little bit. It's one of the closest big universities to us, so it's a fairly quick drive. We've been spending a long time trying to identify the right opportunity, and we feel like we have listened to the community as where, to where they want student housing. To date, we've developed, just developed or are developing just shy of 9,000 beds across the country, coast to coast. We really just pride ourselves on being good community stewards and focus on quality and experience. And to date, we've been extremely successful. A lot of it has to do with luck, but we want to bring some of that luck and success to Couple of things just to note on, you know, all of our projects are of very high quality, highly amenitized. The amenities have changed over the years. It's not, it's, social is important, it's a college experience, but it's college, and the students of today are much more focused on academics, and we need to make sure that we provide them the tools to be successful. So a lot of our amenities have shifted away from the party amenities to, you know, individual study rooms and, individual study rooms, group study rooms. We have a social clubhouse, outdoor indoor pool and lounge, provide retail, which is a convenience to our tenants and to the community at large. Safety is something that we're very proud of, and we take very, very seriously. All of our projects have controlled access key cards from the exterior doors all the way into your bedroom, onsite management, that if someone is onsite 24 hours a day, interior garage parking, and high-definition onsite surveillance allows us to really keep a good eye and understand if there's issues occurring when we are sometimes not. It can't be everywhere, so. As I said earlier, we've spent really the last four years trying to identify the right site in Bloomington. And ideally, you know, we develop urban pedestrian mixed-use projects that are in college towns. And what we found out here is that's not what the overall community wants. Ideally, we'd be adjacent to the university and to the downtown core. And it's, if we did that, we'd be, you know, trying to, you know, move a boulder up a really steep hill here. So what we've tried to do is we've tried to listen and try to identify the right locations. And as part of the 2018 comprehensive plan, just a couple notes, which I think really helped identify the site as a phenomenal location for purpose-built student housing. And there's a lot of markets where, you know, student housing is not a good term. I am not trying to disguise this as anything but. This is purpose-built student housing, and we feel like it's in the right area. In the comprehensive plan, it speaks to identifying areas that are adjacent to campus and underdeveloped commercial corridors outside of the downtown. And then it already, another comment was an area that already contains a relatively high percentage of student-oriented housing. And if you look at the area that we're in, it's fairly dense, it relates to student housing, it's on a very active commercial corridor that, from our perspective, is, at least our site, is very underutilized, dilapidated. And we look forward to putting something that's very exciting in that place. During the Land Use Committee, there were some comments that we took away and spent the last couple of weeks trying to figure out how to best incorporate and respond to those comments. You know, retail visibility and parking, as you saw, we pulled our parking away off the front and pulled our building towards Walnut. The building setbacks, so there were some concerns as it relates to our setbacks along the south that we did our best to try to appease to. We've made some pretty significant movement as it relates to sustainability. We have some feedback as it relates to the building materials that we have. We've come to an agreement with Transit. And then, as was discussed with Eric, we did take an entire floor off of our building, to the building to the, what is it, to the east. It reduced our density. It was a significant hit to our financial pro forma, but it was something that was expressed as a concern, and it was something that we were open to do to make the project maybe a little more contextual to the area. I'm going to bring in our wonderful architect from Dwell Design Studio, Imran, to talk about the next two items, what we did with this plaza and how we dealt with setbacks. about the next two items, what we did with this plaza and how we dealt with setbacks. And let me comment on it real quick, and he can go through the details. We never thought about pulling this building up because we wanted to, you know, provide some parking up in the front, but the suggestions that were made and the result of those suggestions, we couldn't be more excited about. We've, we're creating a public amenity that I think is going to be extremely well utilized for the community with this plaza. And we've got phenomenal architects and landscape designers that are going to really do just a phenomenal job in the design, just to help, you know, make this plaza a really great experience for our tenants and for the community, so.
Thanks, Brant. Good evening, councilmembers. Imran Kifayet with Dwell Design Studio. I appreciate you all inviting us back to discuss this project. As has been covered previously, and as Brant just mentioned, we have been making significant changes around the site design, the site plan for this project. This area between the building, along the west facing walnut, is really one of, I think, the most exciting things to kind of come out of the recent dialogue regarding this project. I think there's a little bit of inconvenience, quite frankly, for retail users, but that comes to the benefit of maybe the community at large, because what we've been able to do, and this can probably be communicated a little bit better in the next slide, but what we've been able to do is develop this space. This is a closed-end floor plan with the building shaded in blue and green to the right-hand side, the blue denoting retail spaces, green denoting leasing and amenity spaces, and then walnut immediately to the west. But the kind of space that yields, we think, functions really well, both in proportion and location as a pedestrian node. We have some slides that we'll show you later in the presentation. We don't need to go to them right now, but for the time being, I think what we're thinking is that this is a very visible pedestrian plaza, and hopefully it can serve as a meeting point and a gathering space for folks all along the walnut college area near our site. This plaza is very close to the park, immediately adjacent to the west, and we think it'll see a great bit of usage. But I think the idea of using this as context for our building, you know, we have retail and leasing and amenity spaces that occur along walnut, but to have this as a buffer between the building and the street, we think actually creates a great visual amenity, as well as a functional amenity for this neighborhood. This is the overall site plan. I think for this evening's presentation, we worked with our landscape architect to develop a colored plan to probably better communicate the extent of open space that we're creating around the site. What I'd like to draw your attention to, in addition to the plaza that we've just been describing, is also some of the setbacks that were covered earlier, but in, more specifically, what's happening on the eastern half of our site continuously along the southern property line. Previously, before the recent changes, I think we had shown our building approximately 10 feet separated from the property line. We have worked pretty hard to kind of move some things around, and we've been able to increase that. And it varies from about 13 feet to 14, about 14 and a half feet. And then we were asked to provide 15 feet, but we have landed at a place where we feel very comfortable, that we can accommodate any sorts of finishes, you know, that the elevations communicate, and accommodate a landscape buffer as well, that probably will consist of trees and shrubs, both for visual screening and then also just for some separation as well. Some sustainable design features that I think Brant will address?
Thank you. Brant Stiles, CDG Acquisitions. One of the major concerns or comments that came out of the last meeting was our efforts towards sustainability. And we really dug in on this one and tried to come back with something that was very meaningful, at least in our perspective, and we hope you feel the same way. This will be the first project. We've entertained solar. We've played games with solar, and we've never made a commitment. To be honest, we're really excited to make this commitment, because I think this will be one of the first projects that we, this will be the first project we do solar on, and we're looking at incorporating solar as a component of all of our projects moving Our commitment to this project is to have a ray on the roof of 50 solar panels, which will produce approximately 20 kilowatts of power, and that will help power our parking garage and all of our common areas. And then another commitment that we are making on this is providing a portion of our roof as a green roof, approximately 2,000 square feet. Will provide additional stormwater buffer, reduce the heat island effect, reduce energy demand, and reduce the carbon monoxide impact on our, of our property. So, in the approval packet, and Eric, if you can go to the next packet, so, these are some of the additional sustainability items that we wanted to call out in the packet. And there is a list of about four pages of additional sustainability components that we will be incorporating into our project. These are additional items that we've identified over the last, over the last week that we wanted to call out. Low-flow plumbing fixtures, electric car charging station, natural ventilated parking structure, you know, fully furnished units. We've never really looked at that as a sustainable component, but I think everybody knows, you know, students move out of traditional apartments, and what do you see getting thrown out in the dumpsters? You see couches, furniture, just a ton of stuff that's going to landfills. And the furniture that we bring in, that we procure, is all commercial-grade furniture that has an extended lifespan compared to the low-cost furniture that you would typically buy as a student, so. Eric, next one. A couple of the comments came up, last was, you know, the use of building materials, and I think there was an example of a poorly, I mean, I guess I'm pointing out another project that was done fairly poorly as it relates to quality with the use of fiber cement panels. And one of the questions came up is, what's the life expectancy of fiber cement panels? And as you can see, if you look at, these are two very reputable sources, and I can't even read them as I age, I can't see anything anymore, but the National Association of Home Builders, and another other reputable source equates fiber cement panel and brick to be 100-plus-year building material. At the end of the day, it's all about the application, and it's all about how it's installed, and we have very high standards for our subcontractors and our contractors. I will say that we've made a contractor rip off an entire facade of a building because it was installed poorly, and made him redo it. And we will maintain those high standards here as well, so. Transit, this is, we will be, we've been working with Bloomington Transit, and we are agreeing to fund a public shuttle route. This will be a shuttle route that we have designed and public transit has approved. But it's not just a transit line for our tenants. Our tenants will be using it, but this is open to the public, and we are paying for 100% of it. It will run Monday to Friday during the fall and the winter semesters. And this is just a comparison as it relates to the use, to the density conversation that we had. And it shows the unit mix from our previous version to our current version. And as you can see, we previously had about 263 units and 822 bedrooms. By shaving off a floor of the eastern building, we are down to 241 units and 750 bedrooms. And we are currently right at about 60% of our bedrooms have a parking spot. This is just to show an updated elevation of the south facade, showing the left eastern section of the building. I know Eric showed one previously, which was just a massing, or maybe it was this, that had the six stories. And now this is the five-story version, and you can see it's just, it's just more contextual, and it's something we were definitely open to as a concession. Same thing. And then these are elevations. I know some of the, these are renderings. Sometimes it's difficult, even for me, to look at elevations and truly understand, you know, what the thing's going to look like and how it's going to feel. So what we've done is, we've got a, our dwell studio has a phenomenal rendering group, and they put these renderings together to show, you know, the use of materials, the modulations, the ins and the outs, and, you know, really how this property will feel with the landscape and hardscape, and, you know, how active that plaza can really be. So it's, that plaza is something that I think we're all really excited about. This is another view looking south. That's our, the retail, that entrance right there is, it's fire lane, and the main entrance is further south. And this is coming south on college. And the next one is going to be north on walnut. This is the same one that Eric showed earlier. And that's all I have for you tonight. I would, if there is any additional time, I would like to reserve a little bit of time for us, if there's anybody that's speaking against the project, for us to have a couple minutes to comment after.
Certainly. That will be provided, definitely. We were just given a, from Smith, Bree, Hoban Associates, CDG Bloomington revisions, but we only received one page. I believe there might be a second page. Is that correct? It ends mid-sentence? And so, just to make certain that we've, we're receiving all the information.
For the record, Steve Bree-Hob, Smith, Bree-Hob and Associates. That's actually the summary of changes we made for the last meeting.
Okay. The question is, is there more than just this one page? Because it ends mid-sentence at the very bottom of the last bullet point.
If it ends mid-sentence, then yes, there was more than one page.
Yeah, there is a second page. I'm not sure Dan's got it. I have a copy I can go through and a copier.
Just so we have all the information at our disposal this evening. All right. Thank you for your presentation. I believe now we'll go to questions from council. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, so I appreciate seeing some of these changes. I have a question, two questions related to the recent changes since last week. So, we were at a density of 77 units an acre with one floor less on the east building. What is the density per acre now?
Seventy.
Seventy?
Correct.
Okay. And then impervious surface was 70%, and with the green roof, is it a little bit less than that now, or?
It was below 70 before. I think it was like mid-65, something like that. So technically the green, technically the green roof, we do not calculate that as taking away from impervious surface. You know, it can be used to offset that, but we still count it as permeable. It is not excluded from impervious surface calculations.
So, I thought the percentage was 70%.
I think they had that listed as a maximum, but in reality, their site plan was less than that.
Does the developer want to add something about, is it less than 70%? I mean, the PUD ordinance we're approving just has the maximum, right?
The PUD ordinance listed a maximum of 70%. That was prior to looking at any type of amenity area in the courtyards as currently drawn and measured. The impervious surface coverage was about 67%, so it was beneath the maximum 70% listed.
And please remember to state your name for the record, Mr. Bree-Hob. We know who you are, but not everybody does. Did he? Okay, my bad. That was it for now.
Further questions from council? Councilmember Stewart-Bom.
Yeah, the last item on this report was that additional brick was added throughout the project, including courtyards and the southern facade. Was that reflected in the visuals?
It is reflected in the elevations. In the visuals, it is as well, but it, in these elevations, it does, it is reflected in here. We didn't, in the renderings, there really aren't renderings of the eastern building or inside the courtyard, so, but we can, if you want to click to the renderings, I can show you. There's about, you know, yeah. So you can see, Imran, do you want to speak to, I know we added a significant amount of brick throughout, because initially, brick was only present on the walnut facade, and we made a very conscious effort to wrap brick, you know, around all the facades in certain and specific locations. And Imran can speak to specific locations.
Thanks. Imran, with Dwell Design Studio again. The walnut facade already had what we considered the right proportion of brick, and we didn't really want to, you know, ruin the balance, I think, that we had created in this composition. But if we could go to the elevations, the revised elevations, I can walk you through where the additional brick was added. If we could go to the sheets that have the head-on elevations, thank you. Okay, so this is a great sheet to start with, thank you. So the top elevation shows the south facade, and what we've done is, the material that's shown shaded in gray continuously along the ground floor, that is brick. Now, it's bumped up slightly, but I can just, walking around the four elevations, I can show you where it was increased. So, along walnut on the western portion of the site, we really just kind of cleaned up the amount of brick and made sure that it was being used a bit more consistently around the base. Working our way to building 2,000, on the right-hand side, this is still the top facade, the top elevation, we again have brick, obviously the building has stepped up, but we have brick running along the base of the building. About halfway through, now, you can see in the key plan, shown on the, sort of on the bottom right-hand corner of the sheet, that there's a lot of movement in the facade in and out. Thank you. So a lot of this brick is wrapping three-dimensionally inside the courtyards as well, but the portion, I'd say the quarter of the building elevation that we can see along the south facade, the brick does step up to the second floor. And by the time it wraps around the southeast corner of the site, the entire tower element is brick. I think we felt like that could be a pretty good architectural punctuation mark, if you would, just in terms of composition. The walnut facade really was not changed. We did revisit some brick along the storefront areas and along the retail areas, but as I mentioned before, the overall sort of use of brick, we were quite satisfied with previously, so we didn't really want to mess with that too much. If we could go to the next sheet, I can show you the continuation. Thank you. It may be best to look at the lower elevation, the east-facing facade. That's where we pick up the tower. That's full five stories of brick. And that, it pretty much terminates, I think, the use of brick along that corner. The north facade, the elevation to the north, to the top of the page, sorry, on the right-hand side shows the facade and fairly heavy use of brick along walnut. And again, as we work our way back towards the site, we're trying to use it consistently along the base of the building. In some areas where the brick seems to be shaded out or seems to be a little bit more pale, it's only because it's an inset courtyard, and so we're just, to try to keep the elevations clean, we're just showing it a little bit more ghosted out. But the idea still is that the ground floor of the project is wrapped in brick, and as the building steps up at building 2,000, we're maintaining the use of that brick on the ground floor as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're still on questions. Councilmember Chopra.
Yes, too. The first has to do with the reduction in height. At what point was that floor eliminated in the process?
Last, this week? Last week? In between the last meeting and? Correct? Yeah.
Okay. I guess I want to know why, because I don't recall that that was an issue. In fact, I was a fan of the density.
It was a concern that was addressed. And, you know, to be honest, we're trying to be as responsive as we can to concerns that we hear. And it was something that we were, decided internally that we were willing to, to give in on.
I don't, I don't recall that concern, but that doesn't mean it, it wasn't voiced. My second question has to do with your decision to use solar panels. That was my suggestion last week, and how you arrived at the amount of kilowatt power you'd be able to produce or place. You know, how was that decision made?
I think it was, it was twofold. It was trying to understand structural loads on top of the roof and what we could handle. And then two, it was trying to understand our public, our, our, all of our units are independently metered. So we, we don't, the tenants pay for their own electric. What we can control are the lights in our garage and the lights in our common areas and the lights in our, our corridors. So in talking with our engineers, trying to understand sort of what those, those loads are, and comparing that with the structural loads that would actually be put on the structure. It was a, we felt like it was a, a number of kilowatts that would really be meaningful to the project.
Okay, so am I correct in saying that those solar panels will be used to power common areas?
Common, a combination of common areas and parking garage lighting.
Okay. And, and you can actually, like, wire it that way?
All, all of our common area and, common area corridors and parking garage are all metered individually.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Granger?
Thank you. With the reduction in units, can you tell me what the prices will be again?
I think what we communicated last time, which hasn't changed, our four bedrooms are ranging in, right around the $800 range. And when I say $800, I just want to make sure everybody knows what that means. That's a fully furnished unit.
You mean per, per bedroom?
Per bedroom, yeah. So it's, it's a fully furnished unit. Cable and internet is included. Water, sewer, trash is included. Access to all the amenities, access to the public transportation, that is all included within that rent. So what we try to do is we try to bundle it as much as we can to make it simple. So the $800 might seem like a lot, but if you actually break it out and quantify the additional costs that they would have to incur if it was not included, it's extremely competitive.
And your one, one bedroom is a thousand?
Our, I think our, our, one bedrooms are right around $1,000.
Thank you.
Welcome.
To follow up on Councilmember Granger's question, what is, since you removed the floor, what is the total occupancy of the, of the project?
Seven hundred and fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty, okay. Seven fifty-one. Okay. They're about seven fifty. Okay. I have a question for Mr. Gorlick. So this project is placed within the Gateway North areas plan of the, of the comprehensive plan. Is that correct? Yes. And in the beginning, you referenced that, and it says in the, in the description of Gateway North, "Due to its close proximity to Indiana University, the character of this focus area can support the diversification of housing types, including but not limited to multifamily residential commercial uses such as student housing and service facilities." However, it does go on to say, "While being sensitive to the diversity and mix of housing in this corridor, incentives can be used to steer the development toward underutilized markets and high-quality design." So it seems to me that we're lacking, in fact, in, within this description of Gateway North, it describes that the gateways into downtown have much to improve on, and I would agree. Is this an example of high-quality design or it doesn't address underutilized markets?
Well, so the underutilization, I would certainly point to the current use of the property with one-story buildings for motels. You know, so certainly there's a higher, better use for this piece of property at this location that is better served than a one-story hotel. In terms of unique architecture, I think yes, and the planning commission thought yes as well. Certainly, the changes that they've made through the council have increased that as well. So, I mean, certainly, it's also up to the council if they feel like this is a significant architectural product at this location. But planning commission said yes.
I see. Must be the eye of the beholder. It also goes on to say, "It should establish a sense of arrival into the downtown." It's an, as an important gateway function. Does this serve as a, as a sense of arrival, sort of a welcoming to the city to encounter high-density student development across from a very notable, very expensive, in terms of community investment, Park, Miller Showers?
Yep. So certainly, I think, you know, it's important to look at this entire corridor as a whole and how each project accomplishes that. So each project coming forward, you know, the comprehensive plan encourages that to have a high architectural context. So that this is something that has a great street view. When you're driving into the city, what do you see? What are, what are you first encountering? And so I think the street presence to this building certainly has a lot of modulation, a lot of different materials. It's got a great plaza along the front. I think this does have a good, significant view coming into the city. And hopefully, other projects that come forward will help promote that as well.
Okay, thank you for that. Other questions from council? Councilmember Volin?
Okay, so I'm interested in the changes that have been made since last week, since I was here before. And I, at the outset, I want to say how impressed I am with the responsiveness of the petitioner. This is significantly more responsive than Evolve. So I want to compliment you on that. Solar panels, so why, why are you surprised that, or why are you guys concerned that there might be structural problems with solar panels? From my calculation, your panels would deliver maybe 500 watts apiece. I've got 300 watt panels in my house, 18 of them. I generate 5.4 kilowatts through them. You're only proposing about four times as much as that on a building this large. How could they really be something you would be concerned about having trouble holding, your roof having trouble holding them up?
All of our buildings are designed very specifically to the certain loads that they can, that they're designed for. So it's critical for us to make sure that we engage our structural engineers and have the conversation about, hey, we're going to put an additional X amount of pounds per square foot on the roof. What, is, are there going to be material modifications to the, to the trusses or to our structural, to the structural form of the building to support that weight?
I mean, sure. I just, I mean, the parking garage alone ought to be able to support the additional weight of solar panels. They, anyway, I, that's a small thing. I also wanted to know more about how much parking is there now. How many spaces, the spaces haven't changed. That's the number of units have. Is that correct?
The parking has not changed. Only the units have.
So how many spaces are there? You have, say, approximately 0.6, but?
I do. I want to make sure I give you.
Yeah, sure.
Accurate. And I have all the information.
That would translate to 450. I don't remember how many spaces there were.
Four hundred and fifty-seven spaces.
Okay. Did you consider at all, is there parking in both buildings?
No, just in the parking structure.
But did you consider removing a layer of parking to put more units there so that you wouldn't have to get rid of so many units?
Can you repeat the question?
In other words, it's, it's my opinion that a living unit is a better use of this square footage than a parking space. Did you consider getting rid of a few spaces in order to put back some of the units that you took out of the second building?
We, we did not. We are, we're, we're a proponent for smart, smart growth. And in the right environments, in the right markets, I don't want to discount anything that's going on here. We have to make sure that our project is marketable and marketable today with, you know, hopes for the future. And in this market, with the regional transportation, its proximity to other, you know, larger communities and being in the Midwest, we feel for a marketable project, you know, the 60% is, is right in that sweet spot where we can charge. If we, if we parked 100%, guess what would happen? Everyone would bring a car. If we parked 10%, we're going to have issues with parking. That 60% parking ratio allows us to not enable our tenants to bring their cars. We, we charge a, a premium for it. So the people that want to have their car, they make that sacrifice and they pay for it. And the people that don't really need a car, they, they take a second guess, take, take a second thought about, hey, do I really need to bring a car? Or can I use alternative modes of transportation? Or does my roommate have a car? And can I use his? So if we brought 80, 90%, I'm sure we'd fill it up. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't be able to charge what we charge. But we like to provide alternative modes of transportation, bike share, car share, Uber and Lyft, location pickups within our, within, designed within there. So that, that from our perspective is a market issue. And a lot, sometimes it's out of my control because our investors, they, they have expectations as well.
Sure. But I mean, in land use committee, you all talked about how you were looking at a range of between .5 and, at the, as low as .5 spaces per bedroom.
Sure.
If you were simply to reduce the amount of parking by the same amount that you reduced the amount of units of bedrooms, there are, I mean, to, to get down to the ratio you had when it was 822, you had a ratio of 55.6% or .556. To get down to that, you could get rid of 44 spaces and make more units out of them. It seems like that's within your ra, the range you were talking about.
Making more units out of it is, is a challenge.
Of course. I mean, I know it's not trivial.
The parking dimensions that we have in our garage, you know, you're, you're, you're 124 by 180, and to get more spaces, you go, you expand that 180. The, the configuration on, of our site, if we can, if we shrink that 180, which I think is about 240 or so, it's not enough to add more units. So what that would result in was taking a level or a half a level off of the parking garage, which wouldn't allow us to add any more units. So I, I get where you're going. And I, it just, it would just result in us taking parking away that was already there. And we would, we'd really like to keep it.
I, I appreciate the problem. I, I know that it might require a major redesign to do it. I just wanted to point out the idea that
Sure.
in a project like this, I'll take, what Councilmember Chopra said, I'll take bedrooms over parking spaces any day. That's my questions for now. Thank you.
Understood.
Further questions? Councilmember Stirbaum?
Yeah, there was discussion about the walkability and connectivity of the sidewalks. Was there an additional commitment or consideration made by petitioner or, short of that, by city departments that might take some of the responsibility of making these connections happen? So that's a two-part, two-person question.
Well, I can, I can speak, I guess, for, at least somewhat speak for the city aspect. You know, most of the council has sidewalk funds that are available to them every year. So, you know, certainly, that's something that we could look at is completing a sidewalk project along here. Once the petitioner fills in some of the corner here, you know, there are a few other properties along 19th Street. There is adequate right-of-way to get sidewalks in there, so it may not be difficult. But, you know, we, we, the planning department, don't really have a budget for that, or maybe my director could speak to that as well. But we don't really have a budget for those kinds of projects. You know, everything kind of comes through council. So it would be up to you guys to apportion money for that.
I was just going to say, we both know the limitations of the council sidewalk committee. And we got a 2% increase in that, which buys a couple more curbs, but it doesn't complete this. Back to the petitioner on the sidewalk question.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you.
No, that, that question wasn't completed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was rhetorical.
Wasn't completely answered.
All right.
I was thinking I got out of that one. Currently, we're providing almost 200 feet of linear sidewalk is part of the plan. And if it gets the project approved, I'll complete the whole sidewalk.
I didn't understand that.
If, if it means getting the project approved or not, I think I'd be open to, and I know everybody behind me is probably saying, can't afford it, but. Do we know how much? We'd be happy to. We just don't know how much it is, how much, how much linear feet it is. We, we understand the importance of it. And I think it's something that we can definitely commit ourselves to.
I, I would, I would be careful. Just looking at the aerial, there are some segments that can be easily filled in. There are some that putting in a sidewalk would substantially alter the properties that are there in parking areas. So I, I would be very cautious about committing or holding to something that hasn't been designed or really evaluated very thoroughly.
If you guys would be open to us working directly with city staff to find the appropriate locations to add sidewalks where it was viable, we'd be open to do that.
Thank you for that.
Now, Councilmember Sims. Thank you.
Thank you. There were some discussions earlier about negotiating with some property owners, I guess, or owners between the project and the IU bus on Dunn.
Correct.
So where are we there? And, and if, and if you all are willing, excuse me, if you all are willing to do the sidewalks, who are you negotiating with? Just do it.
It wasn't this, it wasn't the property owners regarding the sidewalk. It was the property owners to the east of us. And at Planning Commission, there was a desire for us to create a pedestrian connection between our property and the properties to the east. We've reached out to the owners. They've had some historical, you know, security and what, what's there right now? Wouldn't surprise me that they've, haven't had the, the most pleasant experience. It's a, it's a Motel 6. And to be honest, it's a lot of long-term, you know, long-term tenants that are staying there. So I think there were some concerns as it relates to safety and the experience that they've had in the past. To date, we haven't been able to come to an agreement to get access. We will continue, what we've agreed to is, it is to stub that out. So in the future, if we are ever able to come to an agreement, we've proposed a gated, controlled access fence and steps to alleviate any security concerns, to have it lit, to have it, you know, security cameras. But to be honest, there's, they're, they own student housing too. I can see where their perspective is. I don't want to, it's, it's helping a competitor. I, I, I'm going to be a good neighbor. And if, in the future, we can come to an agreement, we'd be happy to do that. But I feel like sending all of our tenants to the south as well as agreeing to, sending all our tenants down the south to 19th and then agreeing to fund 100% of the new bus line, the public bus line. I feel like it, it allows all of our tenants to get where they need to go.
Okay. And that sounds good, but we both know that they'll take the direct path as opposed to going.
Well, right now, they, right now, they, I don't want to say they can't because everyone always sort of finds a way to do it.
Right.
But it, it's fenced right now. And it's about a 15, 10, it, it's a pretty significant grade change that's, that's overgrown. And it'd be, it'd be pretty, it's fenced and it'd probably be a real challenge to, to get through there. And it will be fenced by us as well.
Okay. Couple more.
Sure. Please go.
One comment, and there was something about the council sidewalk committee. And we do know, as Chris says, or Councilmember Stirbaum says, the limitations. And I'm not so sure that I would approve that we would ever include that discussion in part of a project, our, our council sidewalk budget. Because that would mean we'd have to change priorities which have already been set for some time. And trust me, I'm on this committee, and that will not replace the priorities that we've already set. That's just a comment I want to throw out there. Now, the little pass-through, the crosswalk between Walnut and, I'm sorry, College and Walnut. Walnut, that will now lead directly to the project where it used to be offset. Will there be any lights or pedestrian or any, what will we do there to have a smooth flow across there? Because there will be a little bit.
So, so we have not, you know, they have not designed a, a complete site plan at this time.
Gotcha.
So that, those kind of level of details, we would deal with when it comes to the Planning Commission for a site plan approval.
Okay.
The, the lighting and pedestrian crossings, you know, those minutia, we would, we would resolve at that point.
Okay. Which, which are all part of some of the things that the Council Sidewalk Committee does as well. So, okay. Last question. How did we come up with the, the almost agreement for operational cost for the transit for a three-year period? I mean, how do we, how do we come up to that, with that?
How did we come up with it? Or how are we only adding?
The term, three years.
So the, the term is a three-year term that will be renewed on an annual basis.
Yes.
And it, all it does is, if, at the end of every term, at the end of the three-year term, it allows us, if, if there's been any material modifications, whether it's, that we come back to the table and we have a discussion. So if, if there's additional transit lines that are going to our property because the transit lines have changed and we don't, like, we're paying for a public bus. And if there's another public bus that's doing the same tran, same line as us, we just, and it's serving other communities, we just wouldn't feel that's fair. So we just want to make sure that there's something there that keeps it even playing field.
Okay. So there is a minimum of a three-year commitment?
Three-year commitment no matter what. And if there's been any changes, reasonable modifications to, that would impact the project. If nothing changes, we're, we're here for, for good.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about, I, I need some clarity on the question of sidewalks. So I understand that you had pledged to create some sidewalks off-site, to connect some, but I'm not really clear on exactly where. 19th Street, is that correct?
Correct.
How about, are there any sidewalks on Walnut that you're also wanting to connect? Can someone sort of?
Yep. So the, the black box that is drawn on this aerial shows where those sidewalk connections would be complete. So that would encompass the property to the south in front of the Parkview Apartments and then wrap around 19th Street to the east. So it would complete sidewalks along Walnut, along this property, as well as, you know, would connect if stuff to the south and then complete it wrapping around 19th. Along 19th, you've got a, a good amount of properties that have them. There are a few gaps along 19th Street, but this wraps around the corner and then helps complete some of those gaps within existing right-of-way.
And then the, I want to go back to the, Mr. Breehab, did you have something to say about that or?
Just going to provide clarification if you had a question.
Well, I mean, we heard a public comment last week about how there really is little usable sidewalk on 19th Street. And I need to go down to Google Street View and look and see. But I just wanted to clarify what you were committing to with this project.
Yes. And again, as Eric had pointed out, we're committing to the area highlighted in the black square, basically at the intersection of 19th.
Yeah, that's fine.
But it is, as you'd mentioned, sidewalk along the remainder of 19th is, is piecemeal in nature.
Okay. Thank you. The other question, I wanted to follow up on the bus question. So are you committing to a certain, well, not committing to a dollar amount, are you committing to a certain amount of mileage?
As a dollar?
The length of a circuit, is that what you're committing to? Mr. May, can you maybe help clarify this? In other words, I'm reluctant, I'm, I'm, I think I'm as reluctant as you are to commit to a dollar amount because dollars change. But the practical effect of the route, could we have the map that would show the route? Somewhere. Well, he'll find it. Mr. May, if you can comment on this, like, what exactly is the, the committing content of the agreement that you've worked out?
So with respect, Lou May, General Manager, Bloomington Public Transportation Corporation, with respect to the route itself, this is just one concept that we've discussed with the development team. We've kicked around several different ideas. One of the factors that affects the routing, we're trying to maintain a frequency of 30 minutes with a single bus out there. So probably the round trip on the route needs to be about five miles approximately in order to maintain that 30-minute frequency there. We, we haven't concluded a final route alignment there, but I think that's something that we can easily reach agreement on.
How does this current suggestion of a route affect your thinking about the route optimization study that you've just completed?
Yeah, we, we've looked at the consultant's recommendations from the route optimization study, and there isn't a route that provides a good connection from this area to campus directly. There are some indirect linkages there. We have a, a 60-minute frequency route that runs up and down North Walnut Street into the Downtown Transit Center. And before you get to the Downtown Transit Center, you could, could connect to an east-west route. But again, it runs at a 60-minute frequency as recommended in the study. And that's probably not conducive to carrying the loads that you would need to carry.
Two more questions related to this. One is, why does the concept route go up Indiana when it could go up Walnut?
Yeah, we, we've talked about different concepts. I think this is actually the development team's concept. We've proposed a different route there. Again, the key factor is keeping the mileage to a certain distance in order to maintain a 30-minute frequency. There's any number of different route options that potentially could be implemented.
So, but you're talking about 30-minute frequency for a five-mile route? And that's, those are the criteria that they'd be committing to?
Yeah, that, that's sort of the parameter that we're using to come up with the route and the distance of the route, the mileage of the route.
Okay. The other question was, so, I've lost it. I'll remember it. I'll, I'll ask it again. I'll, thank you. That, I have another question about this, but I'll remember it in a minute.
Other questions? Councilmember Stirbaum?
Yeah, just how sound is that long-term commitment? I, I didn't understand. It sounds like it can be modified in three years, but not terminated.
It, it can't be modified unless there's material, material changes to, to a situation. And we're, that's for the lawyers to.
But it's an ongoing commitment.
It's an ongoing commitment. Yes.
Thank, that's what I thought.
Councilmember Pete Munt Smith?
Yeah, I think this is probably a question for staff. I'm wondering if any consideration was given to the fact that the Motel 6 is frequently used by members of our homeless community as short-term lodging for them and that this development would take away that option.
Can I comment on it? I know it's for staff. I hope this is a good response.
No, I, I mean, I don't, you know, we deal with this oftentimes when there's redevelopment of a property and, you know, there is an existing use there that is just being relocated. I mean, we have not sought out, you know, I don't know if housing in neighborhood development has any mechanism for finding homes or shelter for, for this type of problem. But, you know, there's, you know, this was not discussed previously.
Would the petitioner like to add anything or?
We are, don't take this the wrong way. We, we are making a very meaningful contribution to affordable housing. And I know that's not going to impact those individuals specifically, but hopefully in the future, we'll, it will create opportunities for instances like this, for their, for a place for them to go. And, you know, we, we buy properties all over the place that have occupants. We're very mindful as it relates to the relocation. And we're not going to, we, we have heart, we have hearts. So we will work with people that need help and make sure that they're taken care of.
Thank you for that.
Just before, I had a question before I forget. This is for Dan Sherman. Mr. Sherman, we've received this list of revisions, some of which I think we've just been told about this evening. For instance, green roof and solar panels and so forth. Would it require former, formal action by council in order to ensure that it is commit, committed to? In other words, as conditions of approval?
As a matter of practice, we treat reasonable conditions like an amendment. Our code calls for amendments to be in writing, so yes.
Okay. So, all right. So we should consider taking formal action if we want this to be insured. Councilmember Volin?
I have two questions. One to follow up on that one. Would it be possible to bring all these revisions as a single reasonable condition? Or do we have to make each of them separately a reasonable condition?
Oh, it could be put together in a package.
I mean, but it's already basically packaged. If we wanted to accept all these changes, we couldn't do it as just one condition?
You mean essentially treat this as attachment to a reasonable condition and approve this?
Sure. Just for the sake of bureaucracy, yeah.
You do want to make sure that this is.
Accurate reflects what we want. Right. Sure.
You know what it's, what it says.
Okay.
It's what you intend.
Okay. And we can get to that. I remember my other transit question. So at the Land Use Committee, I asked about the population, the expected population of the property in the summer, and you all estimated at 50% occupancy, which seems fairly substantial. And assuming that the, the goal is to house students, they're likely here to take classes and they'll need the same route. Could you not commit to a once-an-hour route during the summer instead of twice an hour? Because they, they have the same need.
I, I think we'd like to take that on an as-needed basis. We're going to provide our tenants with the services that they need. To be honest, our, my preference would be not to overcommit from a financial perspective.
I mean, I don't blame you. I just, now this is the opportunity we have to, to, to make sure that that kind of service is provided. That's why I ask.
Sure.
So I don't blame you for not wanting to commit.
I, it.
Asked and answered. I, I appreciate your answer. That's it I have for now.
Okay. Further questions from council? Mr. Grohl, I had a question about just the relative size of this petition. This seems to be probably the largest if, or one of the largest that we have, we would approve if we were to approve it.
It's no longer the largest.
It's certainly within the top three.
I mean, I guess it would depend on, you know, what, what you're using as your comparison. If you're talking about the number of bedrooms on one piece of property, yes.
Yes.
This, this would be one of the largest number of bedrooms on a single piece of property. You know, certainly there are, there are lots of apartment complexes that have, you know, a high number of units in them, couple hundred. But in terms of size of property and number of units, yes.
And do we, we do not have a definitive idea of occupancy, do we? In these developments?
Well, so, so there is a density limitation, you know, that governs everything. So as I've, you know, mentioned at the beginning, they are proposing a possible bedroom count. You know, they can change that as long as it doesn't go over the density.
I, I guess what I'm referring to is, I, I think a number of the units, this is just anecdotal, but my experience is that these large student housing complexes oftentimes seems to me are not totally occupied. And I wonder about the veracity of that. Perhaps the petitioner could speak to it. You've, you've done models. Of course, you're in competition with other large student developments. And so you've got something new. Students like something new. So you may want to attract them from other developments. But you've run models, apparently. I know that you could, I, I understand that a sizable tax write-off exists if one doesn't have full occupancy. I'm just wondering about need. I mean.
Sure.
Yeah. Could you address that?
It's, yeah. Understanding the markets, understanding the supply and the ma, demand and any, you know, deficiencies within those is, 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 is extremely important. So I'm glad you asked the question. We really pride ourselves in making sure that we understand how the other properties are operating, what their occupancies are, what their lease rates are, any concessions that they're giving, the trajectory of, and the absorption of their pre-leasing and how early they're pre-leasing. And it really helps us understand the health of the market. And to be honest, this is one of the healthiest markets in the country. And, you know, we look at Evolve is an example that's the first project in this, in this area of defined, defined in the comprehensive plan. They are right about 100% pre-leased, they're 100% pre-leased or they're 100% leased now. And they had a significant amount of rent growth. And when you have rent growth in, in high occupancy, it really helps define the depth of the market, that there is, you know, more demand than there is supply. And then you just look at the overall market occupancy and it's right around 96%. And I'll just be honest, there's some markets around the country that, you know, hover around the 92, 93, 94. And that's, it's, it's a good occupancy. At 96, 97%, it gets us comfortable. We, we underwrite our deals at a lower occupancy than that. But, you know, we, we expect to be 100%.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Seeing no other questions, we'll go to the public. Public comments, please step up, state your name. Please sign in too, if you would. And you have five minutes.
Hi. I'm Greg Alexander. I'm going to beat this horse till it dies. I'm sorry. As has been discussed tonight, there's some significant sidewalk gaps that so far have not been addressed in the plan. And it's really awesome, the petitioner has an interest in filling some of those in because the current, you know, this is currently developed multifamily all around there. And those people walk in the streets, I know, because I walk in those streets and I see them while I'm doing it. And a little bit of history, Evolve at Dunhill, when that was approved in, I think it was 2016, it had, the council asked staff, why should this project be approved? And the answer from staff was because of our outstanding sidewalk network in that area. And that's such an extraordinary misrepresentation. There are no sidewalks between 13th and 17th Street on either side of Dunn or Indiana. There are still sidewalk gaps on North Walnut. 19th Street itself is almost entirely gap. It's, it's a very bad pedestrian situation that staff has consistently represented as an amenity for pedestrians. And I bring this up because this matters to me. You can't, you can't add, you guys need to add $30 million to the sidewalk budget, the sidewalk committee budget next year. You guys have to do that. That's the bare minimum to even begin to address the sidewalk gaps we have in the city. And you guys aren't going to come to that conclusion just because I came here and told you. You have to come to that conclusion by staff telling you each time a project is brought before you, this would be a great project except for all the sidewalk gaps. If you hear that again and again and again, you'll start to realize how significantly our entire transportation network is handicapped by this lack of sidewalks. This process is going a lot differently this time than Evolve. And I don't want to give myself too much credit, but it's, it's largely because I've come here, this is the third meeting I've come and said this exact same thing about the sidewalk gap here. I didn't do that for Evolve because I had a little kid. You know, now he's five, I can come out for the evening. And that's really frustrating for me because we have, we have a whole planning department. We have staff who are supposed to be able to do a sidewalk audit, who should be, you know, they wouldn't recommend this project to you if it was missing the street, if the street was only gaps and segments. And I'm going to make a very specific accusation here. I think this is pay-to-play. I think that staff was told to sell you this project. I think staff, I don't know, I'd love to be a fly on the wall, but I suspect the mayor directly told planning staff to make this project look good. And they said, what's a lie we can get away with? Sidewalks. We can say there's sidewalks. There's no sidewalks. Thank you. See you. See you.
Thank you. Further comment?
Hi, my name's Lance Fur, and I'm with University Properties. And we have, like, 492 units, 1,150 beds, spread out over about 38, approximately 38 acres, whereas this project is like 2.5 acre, 2.85 acres in there. Like, dang, 400, no, 750 beds now. I can't remember the units, but anyway, it's a 425 percent variance over the 15 unit, that I understand, the 15-unit thing, and so I believe, we believe that that's too high compared to what the rules have always been, and we feel like that the donation to the low-income housing fund of 2.46 million is one of the reasons why they're able to get this variance, and I'm not saying it's unethical or anything. I think it's a very good cause. I'm just saying that it's an unfair advantage to the, to the local developers and property owners that are out of town, you know, a large company, out-of-town developer can come in and put that kind of money down. These local people don't, can't afford that. And so it creates an unfair advantage, an unlevel playing field, whatever you want to call it, anti-competition. I mean, there's, it's impossible, and it's impossible for most, most of the local people to do that. And so that's why we believe that the, you know, that the whole tie-in between the 2.46 and the density is an issue for us. We think it's, like I said, we think it's unfair. We also think that the parking is a problem. I know a lot of you guys don't think it is, but we, we have a .92 parking ratio in our 1,150 units, and all of our spaces during the week, all of our spaces are full, and they're actually parking on the streets. And so we feel like that there's going to be more cars, there's going to be more, with 750 tenants and 410 spaces, we feel like it's, I think it's .56, whatever, but they're going to have guests too, okay? People are going to visit them, they're going to drive their car there to visit them, so we feel like you're going to have a heck of a traffic problem. They're going to park their cars along 19th and 20th Street, which we own houses that, you know, that we rent along those streets, and so it's going to have, it's going to be a problem. Anyway, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
My name's Gary Founds. I represent two of the contiguous neighbors. Bear with me. The Hamptons and Varsity Villas Homeowners Association. I want to make it clear, I'm not speaking against the development, but frankly, I'm speaking in favor of reason. You know, I have heard a couple of people say that petitioner is in negotiations for a pedestrian path through varsity. That's odd, frankly. During our last call, we asked CDG to tell us why we should allow 820 students to walk across our private property twice per day. They have offered nothing in return. They have not come back with any reason why we should do this. I mean, consider this, it's like asking you to allow 820 of your student neighbors to walk across your yard twice a day and offer you nothing for that. It's an odd request. Nice neighbors perhaps, but give us a reason. Planning keeps talking about a UDO that's not been yet adopted, that's also rather curious, but I'll skip past that one in the interest of time. I would also reiterate that there is not a need for these units. Nationally, college enrollment has been declining for eight consecutive years. Last year, 1.7 percent, similar percentages prior years. Indiana statewide, down 3 percent last year, nearly as much prior years. IU statewide has declined since 2011. Bloomington has been declining since 2016. Just a few of the publications last year and this year to address the point, The Atlantic, The HT, Insider Higher Education, National Student Clearinghouse Research Center. The most recent from The HT, this is the very first paragraph, "Indiana University is staring at an enrollment cliff, and this drop in students will have a big impact on IU's bottom line." And this was from an interview with Robert Krafchuk, I'll butcher his name, sorry, Robert. I also heard a petitioner say that we can't do more on setbacks because of the building size, that just seems odd. Apparently, the building footprint can't be altered, just moved on a horizontal plane. That's strange. And, you know, there are still extreme variances being requested in relation to what otherwise would apply. Any buffer yard trees? Zero. There should be 35 deciduous and 70 evergreen trees in the areas where it meets RH's zoned property. There is still a 467 increase in density, 500 to 467. Still a 72 percent increase in height. Technology. And I'll leave you with one last thought. You know, doing the math, they're requesting 751 beds on 3.85 acres. I want to ask this question for a very important legal reason. I have a client with 38 acres in a much better location. This land is actually contiguous with campus. If they came to you, in the interest of equal application of the law, equal protection under the law, if they came to you with a request to build 7,400 beds on that property, would you approve that? Would you approve that application? Because that's the same. I'll leave you with that thought. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Further public comments? Okay, seeing none, we're back to council for final comments. Any amendments or recommendations? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of frame the discussion here. I passed at committee, and I have to admit, a great deal of ambivalence even now. I know that there are some strongly-held opinions among my colleagues here, but I can't tell right now where this is going. If there are five no votes, then it's not much point in amending. If there are not five solid no votes, then it's a matter of what changes we're going to need to roll into one or two or perhaps several reasonable conditions, which it would be reasonable to take one more week to do. There are a lot of, I mean, you know, it's hard, it's hard for me to say that I'm ambivalent about this because I absolutely opposed Evolve, and I wanted to see it not built, and it has set the standard for future requests like this. The petitioners clearly have said that they modeled their proposal on Evolve. It's not unreasonable for them to have done so. They saw what was done in exception to our rules, and they proposed it. It's a much better project than Evolve. I am, you know, for a project like it, for, I mean, it's now only as big as Evolve instead of bigger, because they've reduced it by a floor. That's significant. And they have been very responsive through the Land Use Committee process, and now they have been listening, and they have tweaked it to better appeal to Bloomington, so I appreciate them for that. I do have a fundamental problem with, and this is no secret to anybody, the whole notion of student housing. I oppose the idea of a student housing district absolutely. Students are, you know, people that we, when we build them dormitories that have surveillance cameras and residence assistance, resident assistance in them, we are exacerbating the worst problems of campus. I have no problem with college, I have no problem with university, I have a problem with campus. I have a problem with the idea that there is one authority, however benign, designing an entire anti-city that duplicates all the functions of our city and does so in the name of taking care of students because somehow they can't take care of themselves. I mean, every property developer in this room knows that, you know, most students are responsible rent payers, they wouldn't be in the business. So, the idea that we are somehow exacerbating the original sin of a, you know, doppelganger city that sits in our midst, that doesn't pay taxes, that builds housing, is a problem. If anybody's going to build the housing, it should be the people in this room. But because the, we are, the problem here is that we're separating the affordability to someplace else, any place but here. This is, you know, we're separating both students and affordable housing renters to two separate parts of the city. Where is the commitment to mixing them together? Where is the commitment to having a mixture of incomes wherever? I mean, I don't buy the idea that somehow there's so many students that we can't do it any other way. I don't think it's true at all. Before the advent of giant towers, where did IU students live before World War II? They housed among Bloomingtonians. They lived with people. There were no dorms, there was Collins and the Women's Residence Center were the only dormitories before World War II. So, you know, I don't buy the idea that we can't accommodate them amongst us, not that it's easy. If we're going to do it, this is a pretty good project. So, I am very eager to hear what my colleagues have to say, because I have as much reason to vote against it as to vote for it. I'm still on the fence, and I need to know what they feel like. So, I'm hoping for a second bite at the apple. Thank you.
Councilmember Granger?
I hate to start on a negative, so I'm going to thank the petitioners for the solar and the attempts at a green roof and reducing fewer, reducing the beds as proponents of small growth. However, I take umbrage with the comment that the area is underutilized, that really, I'm just going to say, pisses me off. And because you're from out of town, although Mr. Grulick should have known this, this is a site where people who do not have homes have a place to live that's the cheapest place in town. Yeah, there are problems there, but these, this population doesn't have a home to live in. And we're talking about tearing it down so we can build one-bedroom apartments for $1,000. It bothers me because this is where New Hope Shelter for Families shelters families, children who have no other place to go. And it's not, it's not the best place. Excuse me. But they have a place, a roof over their head until we can find them housing. So, you know, right off the bat, I have a problem with that. I have a problem with the fact that, and this is not the petitioners, but that the city maybe has a desire to tear down apartments that maybe aren't the best-looking in town. "Oh, but we're going to build affordable housing there." That I question also, because I know some of these affordable buildings that want to be torn down, their rents are under $600, and my guess is that what's going to be built will not be affordable to people. I know this apartment is not affordable to me. I could not afford to live in a one-bedroom. I couldn't actually afford to live in a four-bedroom with three other people. So, that aside, thank you. This is supposed to be high architectural design, and I guess, I mean, I'm not an architect, but I was one of those who supported Evolve, and quite frankly, I didn't, I don't think that's high architectural design. So, that's, you know, neither here or there, because I'm not an expert. I am really not convinced that we need 800, or sorry, 750 beds. IU is adding 700 beds next year. I do really wonder about vacancy rates in all these large complexes for students. And the research that I have seen, and this is not just in the past week, but research I've seen does not indicate that building a large apartment complex like this will result in a reduction in rents in the rest of the city. I don't see a lot of cheaper apartments. I just, I'm not sure how, about that. I am concerned with parking and parking on adjacent properties and in neighboring streets because, well, parking is always an issue, and I just, I have problems with that. And I am not convinced that this PUD has benefits to the community. I agree that probably the 2.46 million would have benefits to the community, but not this property. Again, I'm not sure that that 2.46 million dollars is going to go into properties that are really affordable for people who need them. And I am also one of those ones that, I know Mr. Sims likes that the students are one-place. I don't like that. I don't like that we separate. We put students here, we're going to put the poor people over there, we're going to put somebody else over there. I don't like it. And unfortunately, that's what I'm seeing with this, this housing fund, that this is a tendency. Again, I did say that I approved Evolve, but that was really about it being adjacent to campus. This is not so adjacent to campus and how you have to get there walking or bus or driving. I think it's a great piece of property for a housing project. I really do, but I don't, I don't like this one, that they're just, if there are just too many bedrooms. And if we go back to PUDs and what the rules are, last week, somebody, I don't know who it was, mentioned or questioned, "Do our rules mean nothing anymore?" And I wonder, because we are being asked to make extreme variances. A minimum of five acres, nope, don't have it here. The height variance, nope. PUD, 15 units per acre, well, what they want is a 400 percent variance, even with the reduction in, I don't know how many beds. Maximum of 60 percent impervious, no, 70 percent exceeds this. And the Environmental Commission rejected this proposal. I don't see trees. I mean, there's a lot that even scraggly trees do to our environment in helping us with our issue of green space. And I think we are missing green space. I don't support the project. I know somebody may say, "Oh, we are anti-business." No, I'm not. And I'm not anti-apartments. I am anti-huge projects like this. Anti-huge project out on 446. I just, I'm not, I don't support big projects like this, and I think that there are ways that we could build here that would be pleasant, would have more green space, would really blend with the neighborhood and not distress the neighbors. And I think we should have a plan of what we're going to do for people who cannot afford housing before we tear down housing to build something else. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. Last week, the Plan Commission, of course, began the process of reviewing the new Unified Development Ordinance that will be coming to us as soon as we finish our review. But in going over the overarching goals that we are to consider as we draft the new zoning, we were shared with the clarion consultants here what we're going for. These are the takeaways. Affordable housing, no doubt about it. This is something that the community has struggled with ever since the housing market crashed. We're not building new homes, and that's, that's an issue. And in order to get to affordable, and I love the words of Richard Martin, who's been a former planner and a part of UDO revisions going back to 1962, he said, "Affordable housing is the housing that already exists. New construction will only be affordable with subsidies." Well, how do we get to the subsidies and the incentives if we don't start being creative with how we're going to find that? New construction is not cheap, not with the cost of materials, it's not going to be affordable. The other issue, reduction of student housing pressures, and I will disagree with some of my colleagues, it almost makes it sound like in placing students in one area that is somehow prejudicial or discriminatory, and to me, it is about compatibility of lifestyles. Younger people who are coming here to Indiana University to study and to come of age are going to have different sets of living expectations than older residents, more established residents that are living in core neighborhoods who don't necessarily want to be in large... residents that are living in core neighborhoods who don't necessarily want to be in large, you know, places like this with undergraduate students. It's a matter of compatibility. It's not discriminatory. And so, when we're trying to reduce student housing pressures in other parts of the city, it makes perfect sense to me to have student-oriented housing as close to Indiana University as we can get it within reasonable walking distance, biking distance, ability to take the public transit that BT will be providing. And so, I think this location is indeed a rather ideal place for, uh, a housing project like this. Is it maybe too large for a lot of people's comfort zone, but it does fit the reduction of student housing pressures that this community has always faced, being a town-gown community. We are a second-class city with a huge university in our midst and we've got a plan for that and be mindful, not only of the needs of the students and their proximity to be where they need to be, and also the needs of the longer-term residents of this community. Sustainable development is number three. Improve user-friendliness of the UDO and more predictability in development review process. Those are the five overarching themes that we're all to consider as we take a look at all the amendments that have come forward to make our current UDO draft as good as it can be, better than it currently is. Again, many, many, um, highly invested civic leaders and community members came forward to address their concerns about the UDO. But with respect to this project, again, it did, it did fly through Plan Commission approval based on it is an appropriate location for this kind of more dense housing. Where we're also trying to put dense housing in already dense, established, older neighborhoods, I disagree with, but this is the right place, this is the right kind of housing for this. And so, I will be approving it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sims, you were next.
Thank you. First off, I would not be opposed if we took another week to look at some of the, the But what I want to address first off is a couple of things. This is not an easy subject at all. And if, what I do want to say, I just heard a, a colleague say, Mr. Sam said something about putting one group of housing here and, and the poor people there. And if I've ever insinuated that, then let me make a-
I didn't say that.
Okay, okay. I'll just want to make clear, if I've ever insinuated that, please understand that that is not my intent. We have a problem, one of our many problems is the cost of land. I mean, that, we have limited, I mean, there's limitations. So, we have to make some choices, somewhere along the line. I don't know how creative, but, but the facts are these. We got good ones and we got some bad ones, or some that are not as, um, amenable, I think. I just heard from a, a competitor that says even with the amount of parking, that it's still not enough parking. And it's kind of been my experience and when I look at all these other projects, that is in fact what happens. That we might be happy up here and say point five oh or point four, whatever, but the reality of the matter is that once they open up, then we have people parking on side streets on occasion and, and other things. I'm encouraged that we're talking about transit to maybe help alleviate some of that and get some of these other little buses running around, you know, kind of control that a little bit. Indiana University, and many of you know that I retired there after thirty-three years of working there, and the majority of that was working in residence centers, in the residence center division, okay? Indiana University administration at this point, that I'm aware of, have no plans to create university housing on their property to house over forty thousand students. They don't have it. There's no plans for it, that I'm aware of. Yeah, we'll build, we had plans before I left to build this little seven hundred unit dorm. I mean, yeah, we, we did that and that would help. But I want folks to understand that's some of the things that us on the city council and administration have to deal with. I think IU can house sixteen, seventeen thousand students between single residency dorms, fraternity and sorority row, apartment housing, and they've got some houses spread out that they own on Third and, and, you know, different places. I think about sixteen, seventeen thousand is what those houses can hold. What do we do with the rest of them? I mean, so we have to consider those things. I, I do understand that, that enrollment may be dropping. There are some statistics that's saying some other things. Again, I work at Indiana University in residential halls, or residential programs and services. We recruit hard, folks. We got folks going everywhere to recruit students and the last, or, or residences to come to Bloomington campus. Last I heard is that we anticipate about the same amount of, of, of new residents we got this year for about the next seven years. Now, it may drop at some point. Years and years ago, we used to look at Indiana High School graduation rates and that that was the driving thing. Um, I'm telling you now, this isn't Indiana anymore. We're bringing international students. We're going to Chicago, Jersey, New York, LA. It is going to be hard for IU Bloomington campus to drop below that threshold that they've set. It's going to be difficult. So, this problem isn't going, or, or this issue, I don't want to call it a problem, isn't going away. Okay? And, and that, we got infrastructure things. Let me know if my time is up. I don't want to dominate anything, but, but this is, you know, I, I lived when, you know, luckily, my children are grown now, but there was a time when my children were small, I think my son was maybe about, yeah, two years old, and we lived in, well, it, it is, we lived in Colonial Crest. Now, this is before all these other places that we've had. I would never, ever again have my family live in a student-oriented housing. Is it possible? Yes, it's possible. Some people can do it. For me, I would not do that. That is not conducive. I had some great neighbors until little five, until Thursday night, until Friday night, you know, these sorts of things. I wasn't a fraternity in campus, you know, but we're talking about raising my family and trying to, it, it's not segregating. That, that's not what I want. And we got workforce housing and affordable housing and, and the middle missing housing and, you know, a bunch of other issues besides student housing. And we're going to have to come to grips with that. So, um, I, I actually, you know, with all the response, responsiveness that we've gotten and some of the things we've talked about, I don't think this is a horrible project. I don't think it's the best project, but with what we've got, with the limitations of land, with, with some of the other, um, processes that's happening here, and with our overall lack of housing inventory, and we're talking all facets, with the possible exception of, you know, really, really, you know, five-acre lots and half-million-dollar homes, there may not be shortages there. But everything else, we need to up our in, housing inventory and this portion of housing is just one of those. So, again, I would not have a real problem with, you know, taking a little bit more time before our, our time expires to act on it, to consider it a little bit more. And I do want to thank everyone for their comments, the petitioners, for their responsiveness to some of these issues. And there are some things we say, "Well, financially, and I think we can do it." Well, next time we talk, I hope there's a firm commitment on some things that we've talked about tonight that, that can kind of help that go. And understand that we have to consider a lot of the things that our local folks have said, that you guys say we're going to develop it. We'll, we'll look at this for a while. And I think you're a nice gentleman, but we may never see you again after this is gone, you see? And we're, we're going to have to live with this. And that's one of the main concerns that we're dealing with. So, um, thanks for allowing me to comment. This is not an easy choice. But again, we got more people than we got housing and we have to come up with some things to, to help resolve this. So, uh, I don't have all the answers. I don't think any of my colleagues do. But I think between all of us talking and administration and some of our local people and some other things, I think at some point, we'll be able to get there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on to other comments, Mr. Sherman, if we were to postpone, what, what do we have next Wednesday?
Certainly, just a moment. And I can tell you what they, they, they went out in your packet, they'll be introduced tonight.
Yeah.
And there are four items. Three of them come forward from, can you hear me?
Closer to the mic, please.
Three of them come forward from the Utilities Department. There is a refunding bond, uh, and there is a rate adjustment, and there is a waiver of connection fees. So, those are three. And then we have a fourth, which is from the county and they're seeking your approval to, uh, uh, issue TIF bonds. And we're involved because we annex some of the land in that TIF. So, those are the four items that are coming forward for committee next week.
Thank you for that, so, for our consideration as we go forward. Councilmember Ruff, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I also would like to say, uh, regarding next week, um, to Council, Mr. Sherman just went over what we do have for next week. One thing we don't, we won't have for next week is me. It was a committee hearing scheduled and, um, I wouldn't be missing a final vote on anything, so I, I will not be here next week. We have all nine of us here tonight.
Thank you.
So, um, I'll try to be very, uh, quick here because, uh, Councilmember Granger expressed a lot of, Council, Councilmember Granger's comments have been more similar to what my position is, and so, I won't repeat anything. She said, um, you know, "I was opposed, I, I was opposed to Evolve, uh, the proposal for the Century Village project. I would have opposed Smallwood if I could have." There are ways, I believe, that, that, that are much more Bloomington to meet our housing needs and to meet afford, to, to produce affordable housing that I think, um, are more consistent with what, what this community, where this community is at. I think Bloomingtonians are, are tired of this, to be honest with you. They're tired of this kind of thing, this scale, um, this transformation of our community, whether it's downtown or coming into town. I don't think the community has to grow in this manner. And I, I agree, I have concerns that it's not really fair. It disadvantages smaller local businesses that are our own developers, um, that have less financial clout to get these kinds of variances in this manner, you know? And I'm concerned about that. You know, and I, you know, we, we have had, Councilmember Volin has, has explained to us many times about looking at the growth of Bloomington over a long period of time, around one percent plus or minus a little tiny bit of that. But only a, a certain percentage of that is this, this market we're talking about right now for the student housing. And, you know, I, I don't understand what's going on with, with, with multiple big developments. The amount of developments we see are targeted and geared towards this and are, are, what we understand, or what I've understood to be our overall, uh, growth in this community. I'm, I'm voting no on this and I hope we take a vote tonight because, um, I'd like to, I'd like to, I think we need to go up or down on this. I think the administration's expressed a desire for the council to vote up or down on this and move on. So, thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Who would like to go next? If not, I'll say something. If you'd like to wait, okay. Let's see, I have some notes.
Everyone needs a first bite of the apple.
Yes, everyone needs a first bite of the apple. Um, so I'll take mine. And I don't want to add to what Councilmember Granger said because I think she was very expressive and, and very, very good, said a lot of things that I said, just as Councilmember Ruff did. "I'm in a quandary, do we need more student housing? I'm uncertain about that." And that's uncertainty is, is derived from unknown occupancy of, of current complexes. I don't have a definitive answer of that, so that ambiguity bothers me. The uncertainty is also derived from the predicted decline in enrollment. Now, whether we are, there is a precipitous decline or whether we're at stasis, well, in that case, we don't need any more student housing, even if we, we've leveled off. And the enrollment, as far as I can see, peaked into 2016 and has declined each year. Does the community want more large-scale student housing downtown? Uh, you know, I note that this is more than ten blocks from the square, but it is, according to the comprehensive plan, an important transition and gateway for the community. And there is considerable public investment in this area, in the Miller Showers Park. I would prefer to see other types of housing, a, a variety of housing and, uh, residential housing, owner-occupied housing, uh, mixed use and so forth, instead of a monolithic development. I would say with confidence that District Four constituents believe that student housing has gone too far, large scale, uh, and it's detrimentally impacting the city in terms of demographic imbalance in, in downtown particularly. So, I, I share that concern. Uh, I, I think the sentiment is, and, and this may be counter to, uh, Councilmember Sims, but that the university should provide its own housing needs at this point. Now, that is if they plan on increasing enrollment. I'm not saying that they need to provide housing for all their students, but if they plan on increasing enrollment, then they ought to be thinking about their facilities, their instructors, as well as their housing, their housing as well as those things. From experience, I don't regard this type of housing as durable or adaptable for future housing needs. I think, I, I frankly think we've maxed out on this monolithic, large-scale development, student development. Recognizing that the petitioner offers a sizable contribution to the housing fund that is undoubted, uh, but I am troubled that in place of what used to be demonstrable public good onsite, um, large contributions fulfill this demonstrated public need, uh, good. I think that the public good should be manifest onsite. I think that should be apparent onsite, not just in terms of a large contribution. So, given my reservations, uh, I will vote no. And I will now go to Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
When I saw the, uh, changes that had been proposed, um, since last week, I was very pleased to see these changes because, uh, it meant that, uh, the petitioner was listening and did care about our concerns that we had expressed in Land Use Committee. The solar panels, the partial green roof, um, the commitment to have, to fund Bloomington Transit, these are all excellent, uh, changes. And last week, we already saw the, the, with the, the much more, um, new urbanist, uh, design where the building is pulled up to the street, which I also embrace as a very good change to this project. But, uh, so it was difficult for me tonight because I, I do, I do appreciate all the changes that have been made. I, I think that these are all great steps and I would love to, to be the first, uh, community to benefit from CDG having solar panels and I, I would hope that they would continue to, to have solar panels on future buildings. However, um, my misgivings that were expressed in previous Land Use Committee hearings have not been overcome and I think my colleagues who were not on the Land Use Committee have made some excellent points, Councilmembers Granger and, and Ruff and Rallo. There is, there is a question of, uh, whether this type of housing is, um, A, desired by, uh, the non-student population, uh, that, that I largely represent, and B, necessary. Uh, we hear about ninety-six percent occupancy rates, but then, uh, through other channels we hear that, um, Smallwood is only sixty-seven percent occupied. So, uh, um, I don't quite buy this ninety-six percent. It also just doesn't add up with the numbers, uh, given that- It also just doesn't add up with the numbers, given that in recent years, the student population has not increased as much as the additional buildings that have gone up. And I do, as Councilmember Rallo said, I also hear from my constituents that they don't want more of these tall, sort of modern-looking, big chunks of building in the near downtown area. And this is—not really campus, this is the northern part of downtown. But really, I have to come back to what I said last week, and that is that this is such a great deviation from our current ordinance, that it really does look—I'm not saying it is, but it does give the appearance of pay-to-play. And I don't like that, I think that is a terrible message that perhaps we're not sending it, but that's the way people are receiving it. And I think we need to be very careful. And it's difficult, I mean, how do you really separate in your mind, you know, the $2.46 million that can go to help people who need housing in our community from this project? It's, you know—I'm not accusing anybody of using that as the reason to approve this, because as I've said, there are some good features, and they have improved. But it is looking at the great difference between what's in our code now and what is being proposed. It's just too great a chasm, and I don't want there to be any perception that we're allowing this chasm because of a monetary contribution. I also think it is a worrisome trend that we are seeing older, affordable, very cheap, let's say, housing, such as Motel 6, being replaced by—by new fancy shiny developments. I mean, they look nicer, yes, absolutely, this would look nicer than Motel 6, yes. But where do those people go? More than the money in the pot, we need actual units, where low-income people can actually live long-term. So, while I do appreciate all the time and effort that CDG and Smith-Brehob have put into this petition, I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think Councilmember Sandberg wanted to make another comment. Anyone else would like to speak first round? Okay. Seeing none, then we'll go to Susan Sandberg.
I did want to make one more comment with respect to the payment in lieu option. I do feel that in the interest of affordable housing and how we're going to get there, this is an important component, I think it's been unfairly maligned, and I do want to say one thing. We did turn down a project of this similar scope in an area that was on too small of a property and not in the right location. The Century Village property proposal was not approved, and that came with a, if I'm not mistaken, a voluntary contribution to the Affordable Development Fund. So this body and Plan Commission is certainly capable, if it's not an appropriate project, no matter how much is on the table for the benefit of the Housing Development Fund, it will not be accepted, and I think that speaks to the integrity of us as a body, Plan Commission as a body, and the administration. We have actually heard our staff and our administration tonight called liars, that they're somehow manipulating and doing back-room deals, and I take offense to that. I know these good people who work for this city, and I know that is not happening. I also would like to say with respect to the local developers, that if people came to us with a really good project that was in the line of what we're looking for with the missing middle, with a nice proposal for a quad or a smaller condo unit, and they did not have the funding to voluntarily commit to the housing development, if on the face of it, it was a good project, and it was worth our consideration to improve our missing-middle housing stock, I would, you know, undoubtedly approve it. It does not have to come with that voluntary commitment in order for us to make good decisions with clarity and with integrity. And I do want to get that on the record, because this is actually an amendment that's coming forward to the Plan Commission tomorrow night. It probably won't come up, we may have to have additional meetings beyond tomorrow night, which is going to go into the wee small hours, because we're going to be dealing with the Plexas and ADUs, and that's probably going to take up a good bulk of the night. But there is an amendment on the table that came actually from the Chamber of Commerce, and I happen to agree with it, that they do want to see a more administrative procedure adapted by this body for the City Council to establish a process for determining how that money is collected, how it is utilized, how it is going to be allocated, and that needs to be in place before the new draft of the UDO is finalized. I happen to agree with that amendment, I don't know what Plan Commission will do with it, but depending on if it gets voted up or down, we as a body have an opportunity to reexamine that. If there are muddiness and murkiness, and people are concerned about this Housing Development Fund and how those dollars are obtained, we can fix that by having a very, you know, ironclad, clear process in place that would take any of the suspicion that this is an unfair process, that it is not, you know, does not level—is not, you know, an appropriate level playing field for smaller developers, who certainly are welcome to come forward with good projects to give this community the housing that it needs in the proper locations, where it's not going to cause concerns or problems for other entities in the built environment. I just wanted to get that on the record, thank you.
Thank you, we're on second round, comment or recommendation? Who would like—anyone else? Councilmember Volin?
Yeah, I want to throw a few things in here. First of all, there is a demand for housing, let's not kid anyone. There were 8,200 freshmen this year's class. That's 200 of them living in lounges. In fact, I'll quote you from the Herald Times. "About 200 Indiana University students are studying the fall 2019 semester living in residence hall lounges." That goes with—you can look almost every year in the Daily Student. August 2018, 153 new students living in lounges. August 2016, students living in lounges decreases to 115 from 180 last year. 2012 November, overcrowding leaves students without residence hall rooms. August 2012, temporary housing number is down. RPS has gone, usually starts with 225 to 275 students living in a floor's common space. January 2009, students no longer living in lounges. September 2002, all the boys in the lounge, 38 students, have been designated to live in lounges. It happens all the time. There's only—the new dorm that's being built next to McNutt will add 700 beds, and that'll be the first net new housing in 50 years that the trustees have approved. Every other new construction that's happened has been offset by redesign of other dorms, which has reduced their capacity, or the tearing down of a building like a University Apartments East, or was it West, I forget which one got torn down? There you go. Mr. Sims, no. So, you know, let's not kid ourselves. It's tempting, as many people said last year when they objected to Century Village, that the demand is going down. This is the last school in the state of Indiana that's going to suffer from an enrollment problem, because it's the school that more people want to get into than any other school. It's the flagship university in the state of Indiana, okay? So, we may suffer a little bit, but I don't even know what suffering means. IU can't control its enrollment. IU has always grown, every decade since it started in 1820. Bloomington has grown every decade since it was founded in 1818. Monroe County has grown, and we're growing by about 800 to 1,000 people a year, on average, okay? So, we can debate what kind of housing we want, and that's in fact what we are debating, but there's no doubt in my mind about that every decade is going to be a need. Yeah, maybe we'll slow down for a few years, but we're going to have more people living here by 2030. I think this is a good location for urban apartment housing. I'm just concerned about its intended use, that it's concentrated for one very narrow demographic, however big that demographic here is in town. That money that's being set aside, it's not really about—I mean, it's not unreasonable for a developer to pay some money in lieu of doing something else. It's not—I will grant that, I don't have a problem with the Housing Development Fund. My concern is what we're doing with the money, where we're putting the housing. We're concentrating it in certain areas of the city, or are we? We're certainly not putting it here. What if this building were seven stories tall, but the extra story was entirely affordable housing? How do we feel about it then? Okay? Something to think about. Not that the developer wants to propose that, I'm just saying, for the sake of it, is it really the problem that this building is tall, or is it that there are students living in it? And that non-students don't want to even see it in other neighborhoods, let alone think about it in their own? I don't disagree that this project will make more room for non-students in core neighborhoods. It will draw people out, draw students out of core neighborhoods, just as Smallwood did in 2004 when it opened. There were at least four houses in Garden Hill that went from rental to owner-occupied, okay? This is a thing that happens, and I do agree with the idea that if we build more housing, it will generally keep rents from going up as higher as they do, if it not-brings them down. I mean, not only should there be affordable housing on this site, if we really wanted to get rid of a big objection to it, I mean, IU should have affordable housing on campus. Why don't they house staff members, clerical staff onsite? Why does it have to be only students that live there? It's because we tend to treat students as children, we don't treat them as adults, and IU is—the campus is designed to keep them treated as children. With all due respect to my estimable colleague, Mr. Sims, who worked there for a long time, I don't—I—you know, he worked in the dorms, the dorms existed, we're not going to take them away. The fact that I object to the idea of dorms in the first place is something, a matter for another time. Nothing wrong with the work that he did, but there is a problem with the architecture itself, and I don't want this to promulgate the notion of a dorm. So, this is why I keep—I'm torn by this. Evolve set a precedent to ignore the old rules. We voted for it, the council majority voted for it, despite the fact that it doesn't go with our existing zoning ordinance. That set a precedent. Approving this would set a pattern, and so the question is, do we want this to be Campus Housing West? Because if we approve this, and we already approved Evolve, any other developer would reasonably say, "Why can't I do that too?" This community has reacted over decades by slowly putting rules in place. There's all this crappy little housing in Elm Heights and Old Northeast, apartment buildings with ugly mansards built in the '60s that are just, you know, set back in the street, they're suburban in the middle of our city. There's a whole bunch of crappy big housing in Garden Hill that was built before we put rules in place to prevent that kind of crappy housing from being built. We started neighborhood parking zones in 1992 to address the issue of parking. If there's a challenge with parking, it's a challenge with people wanting to continue having free or cheap parking as convenient as possible. You can have it cheap, or you can have it convenient, you can't have both. The solution to the neighbors who have parking lots up there that might be affected by this is to create a parking zone up there, is for them to start charging what the market will bear for their parking, because it's clearly a commodity in demand. Even at the same time as this development, if it's going to go forward, should separate the cost of parking from rent, so that people can opt out more easily. I'm assuming they're going to do that, but just in case, something should be brought up. But we need to charge more for it off-street, and we need to charge for it on-street if we really don't— because it's not need, it's a demand. There are people who demand parking, but nobody really needs it, or they'll pay for what they need. And we need to keep making restrictions like that. That's why we're reviewing the zoning ordinance for the third time, at least, since 1975. We're about to do it. So I hope people can see my ambivalence here, all right? I know the demand is increasing, we need more housing. What we're debating here is the form and the population of the people in this building. Is there a reason why we can't build affordable housing on or near this, instead of just setting it aside? I mean, if we—if the administration could make a commitment to building affordable housing in this area, and I don't know how they would do that, then so be it, but the easiest way to do it is to get the developer to do it. I'm going to yield here, but I will point out that Mr. Sterbaum did not speak in first round, and people should have a chance to respond to him or to Ms. Chopra if they choose to speak now. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims was next.
Thank you. It's a PUD, because it is not being built according to what that zone would allow. That's why we're here for a PUD, okay? Now, we mentioned pro forma earlier by CDG, I think we mentioned it, and we're looking at our pro forma. I mean, this is about building good housing, but it's all about make—this is a business. Now, if we would have said, "We're not going to take your contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund, and for you to build this, you will build 25% of your units at a certain AMI in order to be affordable housing," we wouldn't be here talking tonight, I predict. I predict they'd pull out of here so fast. I could be wrong, I don't think so. I think if we said, "You will do this in order to get that," they would drop it right now, okay? Now, there's a whole lot of things going on, exclusionary zoning, how can we do some stuff? Our limited property, our developers, you know? That's where the money is, is in multifamily buildups. So why don't we get a petition if someone wants to build some single-family homes, you know, in a subdivision, in a project? Why don't we get that? Because there's no money in it, now compared to what other things we're talking about. I mean, let's just face it and be real. This is one part of the overall housing inventory shortage that we have in this town. And for us to say, "Well, you know, it's in the right place, it's needed, it's that," but I—I mean, I'm okay, I respect each and every one of my colleagues, I just say it a little differently. This is one pin in the lynchpin of all of the different areas of housing that this town needs. City, I'm sorry, we're a city, we're not a town. This city needs, and us just messing around with this stuff, you know, I'm okay with it, and I don't want to say messing around, but us to keep debating it, then we're not moving forward. You know, I almost said something else, but I know it upset a lot of folks, and I don't want to do that. But those that think that Bloomington is going to be anywhere near the same way it was when I got here 40 years ago, and the way it was 10 years ago, then I think we're all sadly mistaken. I think we can do certain things, we can build more stuff, we can—it'll take time, and we can maintain the character that I hear about all the time from all over the city. But it's going to take some time, and, you know, so if we vote for this tonight, and I do intend to support it, but this is not at the exclusion of other projects and other needs in this city, and I would like to make that clear as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I will go to Councilmember Sterbaum, and then Ruff. Councilmember Ruff has a second bite, so—Councilmember Sterbaum, do you have a comment?
You know, I liked what Councilmember Sims said earlier, that maybe we need to put this off a week. You know, there are some details, there are some loose ends, there are some—I'd like to hear back about sidewalks more specifically, and I'd like to hear a more clear report from planning about the gaps, and if Public Works would play a role in that, or CDBG money might play a role in filling the gaps if we can't expect the petitioner to do all of that. I'd like to hear more details about the transit agreement. And I really think the addition of brick was token. I think the front of that facade, all the dark color should be brick, and I'd like to see materials that will actually be used. And I'd like to suggest that we postpone this, that we postpone this.
Well, then you'll have to make a motion. Let's go to Councilmember Ruff.
You know, there's a lot to unpack in some of the assumptions and assertions about numbers and growth and the market here. And not that it's not the best system devised yet by people, but when there's money to be made, capitalist economies often over-exploit, over-shoot. overshoot when there's a grab to be made. And Bloomington has come to the attention recently of a larger and larger set, a more remotely located set of interests. And so, just as one quick example, one of my council colleagues made some of how we don't really know, there's some details in these things. For example, part of the recent problem of housing university students on campus has been the large number of dorm rooms closed because of the mold issue, right? That wasn't brought up, but that's, that's part of that, at least a recent part of that problem, right? That why so many were in the lounges these last two years. I just want to give that as an example of how we don't, we don't, we really have all the information and full understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Or a recommendation? Councilmember Follen, do you have a comment?
I think, what?
I'm waiting for a recommendation.
Or final comments?
Second.
Okay, question's been called. Will the clerk please call the roll on ordinance 1912?
So, this is a motion to adopt ordinance 1912?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Ruff?
No.
Chopra?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
No.
Granger?
No.
Rallo?
No.
Follen?
Point of order.
Just vote. It doesn't matter how I vote. You should just vote how you want to vote, not based on my vote. That's why I didn't say how.
What is your question?
Councilmember Sterbaum, Mr. Sherman, is a motion to postpone, does it?
We're in the middle of a roll call. The question's been called.
You're in the middle of a vote?
No.
You can raise it at a later point.
Sims?
Yes.
Sterbaum?
Pass.
Amber?
Yes.
I count. Tell me the...
Oh, three, five, one, sorry.
Three, five, one?
Three, five.
Okay, it fails. Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Thank you for your presentation. We have now to move to first reading. Thank you. Legislation parliamentarian?
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1915 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 1915 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1915, an ordinance authorizing the refunding of certain outstanding sewage works revenue bonds with the city, authorizing the issuance of the City of Bloomington, Indiana Sewage Works Refunding Revenue Bonds of 2019, to provide funds for such refunding and the payment of the cost thereof, and addressing other matters connected therewith. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance authorizes the City of Bloomington to issue its sewage works refunding revenue bonds of 2019 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7,650,000. The 2019 bonds will be issued to refund the city's currently outstanding sewage works revenue bonds of 2004, sewage works revenue bonds of 2006 Series B, and sewage works revenue bonds of 2006 Series C, all of the purpose of obtaining lower interest costs and a reduction of debt service payments on such outstanding bonds, thereby achieving significant savings for the city.
Thank you. We've lost our parliamentarian. Would someone like to...
Yes. Mr. President, I move ordinance 19-16 be read by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 1916 be read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1916 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater rate adjustment. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends the rates and charges in Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater to reflect increased costs of supplying wastewater services to customers and to make debt payments or debt service payments on bond financing for required capital improvements. It also establishes a new surcharge for service provided to lots, parcels of real estate, or buildings located outside the corporate limits of the city.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1917 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 1917 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 1917 to amend Title 10 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled wastewater regarding amending BMC 1008040 connection fees to allow waiver of those fees in two limited circumstances, to promote conversion of septic to sewer, and to complement certain city affordable housing programs. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 1917 amends Bloomington Municipal Code Section 1008140 entitled wastewater connection fees to give the Director of the City of Bloomington Utilities Department the discretion to waive the connection fee for new sewer connections in two limited circumstances. The first is where the application for waiver is made by a Department of the City of Bloomington for a single-family residential dwelling affordable housing project as defined by hand department, using low to moderate income guidelines as outlined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development on real estate located within the city limits of the City of Bloomington. The second is where the application for waiver is made by an owner of real property, which is located within the city limits of the, of the City of Bloomington for the purpose of abandoning an existing septic system, or to otherwise protect the municipal separate stormwater sewer system. These two exceptions to the connection fee promote continued creation of new affordable housing and the reduction of septic system use in the City of Bloomington, projects that both promote improved quality of life.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 1918 be introduced and read by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that ordinance 1918 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Will the clerk please read?
Oh, ordinance 1918 to authorize the issuance of bonds by the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission pursuant to Indiana Code 367143.5. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance by the City of Bloomington approves the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission's issuance of bonds payable with tax increment finance, TIF, from Monroe County's West Side TIF District, a part of which has been annexed by the city. The city's approval for issuing new bonds is required whenever the city has annexed a property within the county TIF district, and the tax from that property will be used to repay TIF bonds. See Indiana Code 367143.5.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I move to reopen the vote on ordinance 1912. Need a second.
I'm sorry.
I move to reopen the vote on ordinance 1912. Mr. Sherman, points of order?
Mr. Sherman, yes, could you please enlighten us?
Let me just say that I believe that...
I think the formal motion is to, a motion to reconsider the vote on ordinance...
Thank you.
...1912. According to our code, that's...
I'll restate the motion as a motion to reconsider. Thank you.
I can tell you that what's required here. When any question has been decided in the affirmative or negative, any member voting with the majority may move a reconsideration of the vote before adjournment. So, you have not adjourned. This motion is in order. Concurrent of a majority of the members present shall be sufficient to order reconsideration of a vote, but if the motion to reconsider is defeated, it shall not be entertained again.
Could you, just for clarity, does the motion have to be made by a member in the majority of the vote that was formally made?
Yes.
Mr.?
I voted no in the majority, and so I reserve that right, yes. If I may speak to the motion. It was clear to me that there were five votes to at least hear what would happen if reasonable conditions were attached, and that's, now, I only know that because I spoke with Mr. Sterbaum, who was unsure of how to vote. I presumed that he was going to make that motion, that it would come first, and that if a motion to continue to a third reading failed, then a motion to vote this evening would have been in order. That was, that was my logic, and so, as Mr. Sherman says, it would take a majority to reconsider the vote, and, but I mean, my goal was to move to a third reading instead of calling the question. I don't know which procedure, which item takes precedence. Mr. Sherman, is there a presidential, is there a precedence over one, of one motion over the other?
You have a motion that's before the council.
What's the alternative?
Again, if the council votes to reconsider the vote, I would want to see a different motion made first. The motion that Councilmember Sterbaum, caused Councilmember Sterbaum to pass.
I think you, the first motion is to reconsider, and then it's a motion to adopt, and you're back where you were.
But again, if, if the, if the alternate motion is to move to a third reading, that there was no opportunity, I mean, the motion to adopt...
Yes, I think you, well, interesting question. I don't have an answer for you. If nothing else is on the floor, a motion to postpone until, to another night is in order. I don't, I'll leave it up to you folks. I don't have a say on that.
The motion to get a chance to be made, because someone called the question, and we took, we treated that as the superior motion.
It was, I gave ample opportunity for a motion to be made. In fact, I gave fair warning to, because councilmembers were ambiguous, that a motion to postpone, or a motion to adopt, was to be made. The motion to adopt was made.
It's a motion to reconsider, and so I think you're stuck with the adoption. Vote on that one. If you want to reconsider, that's on the floor, is the adoption, and you revote that one.
If we don't, if we don't want to reconsider, we vote...
No.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Again, the goal was to get to have a motion first where we could move to a third reading. If the only option of this motion is to change the vote, if there's no possibility after reconsiderate, I mean, right now, my understanding is that reconsideration will allow us to reopen the question. If the only option is to again call the question, then I'll withdraw my motion. If we can go back to a motion to go to third reading, then I'll continue with the motion.
What's interesting here, and what I raised earlier, is that because you need five to vote for or against, if this, the revote results in a non-majority, then I think you have opportunities to think about a third reading. You don't want to leave with having left this matter in other people's hands, so...
As long as if I change my vote, it does not mean it is a vote for the petition, but rather, I mean, I don't want my vote to suddenly become an approval of the petition. I do not approve of the petition as it is. I believe it needs to go to a third reading. It deserves consideration of third reading, but I'm not willing to approve it unintentionally as a result of this motion. Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah.
So, we need clarity. We have a motion to reconsider, okay, that we'll vote on. If that passes, then is the motion on the table to adopt, or does it, do we reopen the question?
I think you're, you're back to adoption.
Okay, all right.
Then I withdraw the motion.
Well, at this point, you've already had a, well, if there's consent to withdraw the motion, you can do that. Takes all of you.
Well, it was your motion.
I made, I made my point clear. I hope everybody understands what I was trying to do. If there's no objection, I will withdraw my motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are now on to additional public comment for items not under agenda. Seeing none, we will now go to council schedule. Mr. Sherman?
Yes, we're scheduled for a council work session this Friday, and you have a few items. These are items that would come up in the second part of, the latter part of September and the early, in the mid-part of October, and they include an inducement resolution for private activity bonds for the Bloomington Housing Authority. Earlier this year, you approved changes in the agreement, so they could still go ahead with this. Now they want to get your, need your help to start that process, and we have an interlocal agreement with Justice Assistance Grant. Typically, you don't need to hear about, you haven't heard about these at a council work session. You have that chance. There is an ordinance that addresses a change in state law regarding how conflicts of interest for building officials are handled in the city. So, those are three. And by the way, although it's not ready for consideration, I think the council will probably take up a resolution regarding Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that's going to be in that cycle. I'm not suggesting that's something that would have to be discussed on Friday. So, do you want to, are you available for council work session? I expect you'd want to hear about the inducement resolution and these conflicts of interest.
By show of hands, who would like to attend council workshop session?
I'd like to.
Well, who's planning on it?
Thank you.
Two of us.
Is that enough for us to hold it?
No, okay, all right.
I didn't hear the answer.
No, we don't have enough, so...
Well, then you should cancel it. There should be a motion of the, the council to cancel the...
Is it a motion to cancel our work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is canceled. Anything else on our schedule?
No, thank you.
Oh, right. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.